May tenth, twenty twenty one. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. For which it stands nation under God indivi- with liberty.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtzwell. We'll do roll call this evening. Please remember to state your current location for this virtual meeting. Councilmember Walton.
Good evening, President from the city of South Lyon.
Thank you. Councilmember Kennedy.
President, city of South Lyon.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, uh, present city of South Lyon.
You, Councilmember Kibble.
I'm here and I'm at home in South Lyon.
Thank you. Councilmember Richards.
Uh, yes, very much so. I'm here in South Lyon. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Councilmember Dill.
Good evening. I am present in the ci- city of South Lyon.
That's a great background you have there. You'll have to share that with me sometime.
Is it swapped? Is it swapped right? Can you see?
It looks good. Dan Pelchat also present in the city of South Lyon for this meeting this evening. Um, with that, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes from July twenty six, twenty twenty one. Councilmember Kibble.
On page three, towards the bottom of the page, the sentence starts or the actually the sentence sign here starts at calculates from fifty-four percent for benefits to it says sixty-two hundred and ninety-nine dollars. It actually should be sixty-two point nine nine percent. That's all I had. Thank you.
Councilmember Kennedy.
I'll move the minutes as amended.
One second.
Thank you, Councilmember Dill. Any further discussion on the minutes this evening? We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion passes. Approval of the bills this evening. Councilmember Kibble.
My wife works at Michigan Caterpillar and there is a repair that for the backhoe that's on here. If anyone has any misgiving with me voting on this, I'll gladly abstain.
Does anybody have a problem with Councilmember Kibble voting on the approval of the bills this evening? I do not as e- as well. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Kibble.
Certainly.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead. I'm sorry, Councilmember Wal- go ahead.
No, it's a fine night. I was just gonna go ahead and approve the minutes.
I'll move the minutes.
We have a motion in a second on the bills. Any further discussion?
Bills rather, sorry.
Yeah. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed. Motion passes. Onto the approval of the agenda this evening. Councilmember Dill.
I'll move the agenda. I'll support.
Any further discussion on the agenda this evening? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion passes. Um, tonight's consent agenda includes um, a Parks and Rec Commission appointee, Tori Renuicich. Hopefully I got that right. Um. Look into approve the consent agenda this evening. Councilmember Kennedy.
I'll move the consent agenda.
I'll support.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed. Thank you. At this time, we are going to open the floor for public comment. Members of the public may speak at a council meeting upon recognition by the mayor. Public comment may only occur during periods designated on the agenda for public comment or a public hearing. A person may speak for up to two minutes during each of the two public comment periods on agenda items or non-agenda items. Waivers of the time requirement may only be granted in the discretion of the mayor and waivers to speak at a time other than a designated comment period may only be granted by the council. Any person wishing to make a presentation longer than two minutes or requiring audio visual equipment is asked to please contact the city clerk requesting to appear on a future agenda. I wanted to go over that tonight because I had a feeling we may have some people here to speak on public comment. And I also wanted to remind everyone that we have a lot on our plate this evening. And while I may sometimes allow folks to finish up their thought or sentence, I'm going to be a real stickler here tonight on the first public comment. And if you do have more that you would like to say or share, I would ask that you please return for the second public comment. With that being said, City Clerk Deaton, do we have anyone with their virtual hand raised or real hand raised for tonight's public comment?
Uh, we do. It's Brian Lair.
Okay, good evening, council. This is, uh, you guys can hear me okay this time?
Yes, Mr. Lair, we can hear you.
All right, uh, public comment number one. Ladies Night was a huge success and was down there around seven PM or so. Grand Truck, there was a line all the way down the street to get in. People were coming out with your four bags of stuff. Lemon Tree was packed as well as what as well as the Corner Social was packed. This was a huge success. And uh, I'm glad and I think this is exactly what the city needed and I'm glad that we could do it because the residents needed as well. While I was down there, Bonnie from Grand Trunk asked for my help to bring to council regarding the use of tents in the parking area spaces next to Grand Trunk. Due to social distancing and rain and wind, she wanted to put music out there and make it extra special for the ladies. The crowd went wild with the idea. And Paul, if it's okay with you, I will send you an email so I can coordinate with you and Bonnie to see if there's any way I can help or be a further assistance to get this done for next year. Uh, the ladies really thought that it was a wonderful idea, but I don't know what's involved. I know that Chief Sobek and uh, Chief Vogel and uh, has to sign off on that and I don't know what the, so I I, but if I can be of assistance, I would love to help. And Bonnie also announced that she would like to be the new ambassador rat. So welcome Bonnie to the city of uh, for the owner of Grand Trunk for wanting to come out and help out your city. So welcome aboard, Bonnie. That's all I have for the first comment tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Lair. City Clerk Deaton, do we have anyone else for our first round of public comment?
Uh, yep, we do have a Daylin Ledbetter.
Thank you.
Damon. It's supposed to be Larry. Hello. Here's the floor.
They seem to be muted still.
I'll ask her to unmute. Well, I've asked her to unmute. But I've got no response.
It looked like the red microphone went away.
It's me, but it's me that that's on, but nobody else is on.
Mayor Kennedy.
Yeah, uh. At least I believe that's Larry Ledbetter. I I'm not sure why it shows that. Uh. I don't know if he can hear us. He just needs to start talking, I guess.
We should be unmuted now.
Excuse me, ma'am.
Yes, uh, it's city attorney, mommy, please.
I've been watching as the individual keeps muting and unmuting. It seems they're having technical difficulties in my experience because we do Zoom for court. Is sometimes you just have to sign off and sign back on and it fixes whatever glitch there might be.
City Clerk Dean, did we have anyone else that may want to jump in on public comment while we are waiting?
No, we do not.
We invite them to come back at the second public comment.
I would um ask city attorney, mommy, to give me her opinion on that.
Certainly can, um, but it seems they did sign off and so presumably they're trying to sign right back on if you just want to give them a couple of minutes to do that.
I think that's fair. Not everyone's been doing this for a year and change like the rest of us. City Clerk Dean, if they have not re-entered into the room, I'm just going to ask that we move forward and we will uh, do everything we can to make sure that they are able to participate in our second public comment.
They have not rejoined the meeting.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we will close the floor for public comment and move on to the discussion of downtown. City managers. You taking the lead on this?
Nate Macar, Economic Development Director and DDA Director is not here to give a report. All of you were provided a report within the manager's report this week. It happened to answer any questions that you may have regarding any of the events or any of the activities that were listed within the report.
Uh. Councilmember Dill, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just wanted to uh, piggyback on what Mr. Lair said. Um, I don't think that'd be any surprise that uh, I am very interested in doing something to uh, support the ladies' night, support the ladies that are uh, trying to plan this. And um, there were several places that I could not get into when I was there because of uh, social distancing guidelines. I did go back on Saturday, but that doesn't necessarily mean other people would. Um, I'm just, I just think that we could make this a much bigger event. And uh, I think there's certainly an appetite for that. If we allowed um, tents, if we allowed the shutting down the road. Um, I think it's, I think it's very important that we give these businesses that kind of support. Um, I just want to um reiterate that and I'm sure I will bring it up again. And uh, that's uh, I don't really need a response. I just wanted to say that I think that that's very important. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dill. Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Good morning, Mayor. Um, I also want to say that uh, Ladies Night was just absolutely tremendous. And uh, the business owners that I had an opportunity to chat with um, early in the day and then later in the day, I was actually there two times. Uh, I, not the owners, but I think that some of their employees, uh, they express an interest in in just really doing what is needed to uh, provide every opportunity for success. And I think that came across very loud and very clear. And they were speaking to me and one of them said, Maggie, I want you to take notes and and this is what we need. And and I think that they they did well. Um, I I think I'm going to help work with them. Uh, the next time on swag bags and really get some cool stuff in them. Uh, we'll, we'll see if we can just pack those swag bags with neat things that people will be posting all over the place. So it was a great success and I'm glad that people are moving outside of their comfort level. And I'm glad that the city uh, loosened the reins a little bit and allow this event to go off because it was truly, truly a success.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtzwell. Councilmember Walton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna um, piggyback on all that as well. Um, as you know, we both grew out there when we were growing up, we used to have sidewalk sales. So maybe look where that's what ladies' night needs is sidewalk sales and the ability to set up out on the sidewalk, out into their parking areas. The tents would be a wonderful thing, bringing all that in, closing down the roads. You know, we grew up in that era of the sidewalk sale, so I think you could probably remember how much uh, success I had. So let's go back to that.
Thank you, Councilmember Walton. Anyone else have anything for Paul tonight on discussion of downtown? All right. Thanks, Paul, for filling in for Nate this evening. Uh, we're going to move on to the fire chief report with Chief Vogel.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Uh, just like to address the tent issue real quick. Um, for any business that would like a tent on our website, southlinefire.com, under the fire prevention tab, there is the tent application. Uh, they can print that out, get that submitted and Chief Sobek and I will get that rolling. It doesn't take that long. Um, like this, maybe for next year, we can promote that. Sounds like it was a great event. Um, busy week, weekend for the fire department, including the ladder truck was utilized twice. On Wednesday, Thursday last week, it had to be used to pull a fourteen-year-old out of a tree that climbed forty feet high. It couldn't get down on Pontiac Trail. And then we were called to assist Lyon Township. Uh, they had a large fire at a flooring carpet flooring business in Lyon Township. Um, we are invoicing the company. We're doing some cost recovery with the township. That invoice has been sent. And we had a couple interesting other calls. We had a fire at the new Fieldstone Development on Eleven Mile. It's a mulch caught fire. That was Friday evening. And then Saturday, we had a pretty significant grass fire behind powerhouse bushes on Saturday caused a little bit excitement. It was about a three-hour event that we had to utilize firefighters from Lyon Township and Green Oak because we don't have grass trucks. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief Vogel. Anyone got anything for Chief Vogel this evening? Thanks again, chief.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll move on to the fire chief or excuse me, the police chief report and Chief Sobek.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just wanted to wish those on the council and those listening the happy belated Mother's Day for all of you ladies. I hope you had a good day yesterday. Uh, the hometown life, the uh, Susan Bala came in. She interviewed Officer Baker along with uh, the little girl Casey, the kindergarten who wants to be a police officer. So uh, they came to the station, did that on Saturday morning. And so we should be seeing a story from them sometime soon. Uh, we're continuing with the accreditation process. We're in the process of going through sixty years of reports. We got about a hundred and ten of those banker boxes and uh, we got to about eighty of them. We're able to condense it down to about five boxes. So not only was a fire hazard, but it's going to also provide a lot more space. Um, but it's uh, you know, it's like, it's like taking a trip down memory lane, reading all these reports and making sure that there's certain things. And so kind of interesting. Uh, we have simonitions training scheduled for Tuesday and Wednesday. For those of you who don't know what simonitions is, it's it's like real life scenarios, shoot, don't shoot, duty to intervene, uh, decision-making. Anybody can basically shoot a gun or hit a target, but the important thing is to know when to shoot and when not to shoot. And so I'll be playing the bad guy for the next couple of nights and I'm probably taking out a bunch of, uh, which called paint pellets. It's kind of like paint paintball, but they're they're pellets that actually shoot from our guns. So we're familiar with how our guns operate. So we have that coming on Tuesdays and Wednesday. Uh, and good news, our phones, yes, I don't hold your breath, but uh, we're looking at hopefully this Thursday to uh, get activated. And so I guess we'll we'll know, we'll know more so on Thursday when they if they call us and say, hey, well, you know, there's going to be an issue, but we're looking at Thursday for installation for the entire city. So hopefully that will get going. It's only been close to a year. And uh, yeah, Ladies Night Out was pretty successful. I was down there for almost two hours, got to talk to several ladies and looked, it was a pretty good time other than the rain that held off early on, but um, other than that is, uh, it was a pretty good event and uh, we'll see what we can do for you next year. And that's about all I have for this evening.
Thanks, chief. Does anyone have anything for Chief Sobek?
I do.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Uh, Chief Sobek, uh, yeah, I've got a question for you that uh. I got a hunch this is close to what Mr. Ledbetter was trying to get at and his comments that he couldn't get through on. Uh, w- we at the Historical Society are concerned about the vandalism that went on uh, recently over at the Historic Village. And uh, I wonder if you've made any progress of of uh, evaluating who committed that serious mess. Okay. And I I think most of it's been repaired at this time, at least when I went over there today, it didn't appear to be still evident. It was repainted and everything. Uh, could you please comment on that for us?
Yeah, we're going to try and go back and see how far the video goes back as far as surveillance on there. We have a couple of cameras that are on that area. So we'll go back if we can uh, contact the uh, the vendor who's that who can show us how to possibly review some of those videos. Um, I know that we're, we have the live stream videos and we can actually see those, but going back and it's going to take a little bit more expertise to go back and try and review some of those videos and uh, the correct software on doing so, but we can uh, we're certainly aware of it and just look into it further for you.
Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks, chief. Um, with that, we will move on to a very important part of our evening this evening. And I would like to introduce our state rep, Ms. Kelly Breen here for a presentation for our first responders here in the community.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, that's great. Representative Breen, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much. Um, I I regret to say that I missed Ladies Night. It was on my calendar. I I had a dental emergency, not even kidding. I had actually messaged um, Member Dill about that, expressing my regrets. So I look forward to the next Ladies Night and any other events that I can make in downtown South Lyon. Um, but I'm here tonight and I'm glad I got to listen to uh, your, your police and fire chiefs because I'm here to talk about some of your fine, fine professionals that you have there in South Lyon. No group of professionals gives the whole aw shucks, just doing my job, ma'am more than our first responders because that is their job. And often, unfortunately, they don't get to tell the good stories. And but tonight I do want to talk briefly about how some of South Lyon's first responders do get the job done and they do deserve some accolades. And clearly, after listening to Chief Vogel and Chief Sobek, the units are doing good work. I understand your police department is going through the uh, the process to get accredited and I wish them all the best with that. It's an arduous process. But I've no doubt in my mind that they'll be able to achieve that. But um, I, after speaking with, my office has spoken with some of your city leaders there and it's come to my attention that something happened on March twenty-fourth at about six o'clock PM. South Lyon firefighters and police were dispatched to the eleven-hundred block of Polo Drive to investigate an unresponsive fifty-nine-year-old female. And upon arrival, South Lyon PD, they, they found the woman on the ground and determined she was not breathing. They were unable to find a pulse. The officers immediately began rendering lifesaving measures. They issued CPR venting. They deployed an AED. Officers administered one shock with AED. Firefighters along with Huron Valley ambulance personnel, they applied a Lucas chest compression device and continued CPR. But within minutes, the victim's pulse was restored. She began breathing on her own. Huron Valley ambulance along with the South Lyon firefighters transported the woman to a local hospital. And since then, she's been released and is recovering well at home. I I want to thank all of the first responders for their incredible heroic efforts, not just for this instance, but for all the ones, everything from helping fourteen-year-olds out of a tree to the not-so-great outcomes when a, when a small aircraft crashes into a home. Um, you guys are incredible. You're absolutely amazing and I'm I'm so proud to represent South Lyon and all of its first responders and citizens. And normally I would be doing this in person at city council and recognizing South Lyon Police Officer Sergeant Baker, Officer Tomannick, Officer Walton, along with South Lyon firefighters Deputy Chief Weir, Lieutenant Conrad, firefighter Hopkins and firefighter Shipley for the quick response and heroic actions. Um, instead, I will be delivering some tribute signed by not only myself, but Senator Jim Runstad, as well as Governor Gretchen Whitmer. So I'm so proud again for all of the work that you guys do. Chiefs, please keep it up. Um, if I can ever be of any assistance, anything I can do to help with what you need, whether whether it's to do something small like this, issue a tribute, or if you've got a wish list that I can help with in Lance, thank please do let me know. Um, again, thank you all so much for having me here tonight. I look forward to seeing you all in person, whether it's Ladies Night or some other event.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for sure. We s- we appreciate it. Thank you very much for showing up tonight, recognizing our officers and firefighters. We appreciate it.
Anytime I can come and talk about some good news, I'd love to. So thanks, guys, for all of your work and I'll be dropping the tributes off uh, within short order.
Thank you very much, Representative Breen. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good one.
That's great. Uh, with that, we're going to move on to unfinished business this evening. Number one, zoning ordinance adoption.
At the city council meeting on April twenty-six, two thousand twenty-one, the city council scheduled a public hearing to hear comments and hold the first reading to adopt the new zoning ordinance and map. Tonight, you have attached a letter from CIB planning discussing his order ordinance adoption and outline of the schedule for the adoption, a resolution to amend and adopt the city of South Lyon zoning ordinance, transmit all comments from the April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one planning, planning commission meeting and a draft copy of two thousand twenty-one zoning ordinance and map. Tonight, possible courses of action are first to the hold, the hold a public hearing and then to either approve or not approve for first reading the revised and updated zoning ordinance and map for the city of South Lyon. Our planner, Kelly McIntyre is here to give further uh, input and information regarding the process tonight. And Carmen, I apologize. Carmen, you're here as well.
Thank you. Um. Mayor Pelchat, would you like to do the public hearing uh, first?
Absolutely. I didn't know if you had anything to add to that before we did that, but certainly I can take, I can take the reins on that. So at this time, at seven fifty-seven PM, we will open the public hearing for the zoning, zoning ordinance.
Uh, Mayor Pelchat, we have one person with their hand raised at the moment. It's Leslie Zawada.
Okay.
Zawada.
Thank you. Um, my name is Leslie Zawada. I'm president of Civil Engineering Solutions located at eleven fifty Corporate Office Drive, Suite two-ten, Milford, Michigan, four-eight-three-zero. As you may be aware, I recently assisted Mr. Heinonen and Mr. Carroll with a recent zoning board of appeals case. During that process, we did a significant amount of research on your existing zoning ordinance, review of the Land Division Act and review of neighboring ordinances related to parcel size and access. It is my understanding that your existing zoning ordinance and the proposed amendments require lots to about a public road and also requires lots to be a maximum width-to-depth ratio of one-on-four. Your current ordinance does not allow access to lots via easements. The Land Division Act allows municipalities to exceed the one-on-four width-to-depth ratio. The act states the municipality or county having authority to review proposed divisions may allow a greater depth-to-width ratio than that otherwise required by the subdivision. I also provided a couple of example parcels within the city of South Lyon that are considered flag lots. I provided information to the city manager and requested that it be forwarded to council for tonight's meeting that provides ordinance language of five nearby communities in the area, including Lyon Township, Green Oak, Salem, Milford Township and Northfield Township that allow greater depth-to-width ratio, including allowing flag lots. Another item we noticed during this project is that all loading is to be required in the rear of the businesses unless there is a fifty-foot setback and then it is allowed in the side yard. This is very difficult to achieve in your downtown and we are requesting council allow front-loading within the downtown dress districts. There are many parcels in the downtown that are less than a hundred feet wide and there are many existing businesses that do not comply with this provision in your current ordinance. We are bringing these items to council's attention so that you may consider changes to the proposed zoning ordinance, which is before you tonight. Thank you for your time and I appreciate your consideration of these items.
Thank you, Ms. Wada.
We do have one other person with their hand raised.
Thank you. Thank you.
I can find. Well, there was. There it goes. Okay, this is Jean.
Hello, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, great, my name is Jean Carroll, I own the property 222 through 228, South Lafayette. I appreciate first having the opportunity to share some comments. About the new zoning change and really looking forward to. The amendment to increase our CBD. So first, I think it'll go a long ways to help promote our downtown. And as Ms. Wada just mentioned, I do want to echo the concern for the rear-loading requirement. In many lots that we have right now, that's just not feasible and if in development. As an architect, if we're to plan for rear-loading on some of those small parcels, we'll fundamentally really diminish. The value or the opportunity to develop, you know, a viable downtown property. Under that restriction, I think there are a number of properties right now that currently only have a front yard, a front. Yard loading area, so I appreciate the council's review of that and secondly. More importantly, I think is this idea of allowing lots to be accessed through easement. A number of our neighboring communities allow this type of configuration and. I'm really here to speak on behalf of just promoting South Lyon. And hopeful that our community will not get passed by or overlooked for opportunities. Because we're not flexible to allow for something like this that could benefit our community. There are opportunities for the planning and zoning board to respond to uses that may want to. Exist in these lots, so there's other compliance that needs to go into these opportunities. But simply to dismiss them as unbuildable or a not possible development opportunity. I think is restricted to our development and our growth as a downtown and I'd like the council to consider. In favor of allowing this type of access, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. City Clerk Dean, do we have anyone else here for the public hearings?
Yep, Jeff Heinanen.
Good evening, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Excellent, my name is Jeff Heinanen, 350 South Lafayette, South Lyon, Michigan. First, I just want to thank you again for all of your time. Secondly, I'll make this quick, I just like, would like to ask you to consider the changes we're requesting to the zoning and ordinances update. You know, I'm a business owner, a DDA volunteer and I want to do a lot more here. Please help me do that by reviewing these findings. Thanks again for your consideration, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heinanen.
There are no other hands raised at the moment.
City Attorney Hamamay, should we close the public hearing before we go to Ms. McIntyre's discussion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. At 8:04, we will now close the public hearing for the zoning ordinance. Ms. McIntyre, the floor is yours.
Thank you. As Paul stated, I am actually being joined this evening by Carmen Avantini, he is the president of our consulting firm. Carmen was very much involved in the initial drafts and the reorganization of this ordinance with the Planning Commission. It's also important he's here, Carmen has expertise and knowledge over 30-plus years in providing. Planning services and best practices, so he is well qualified and can help us with any questions or answers that I'm not able to. Have and he can also provide some background information. We have worked on this document for a number of years, the commission took an in-depth look. At the existing ordinances that were last updated in 1995. And they made changes to the processes and procedures, they reorganized the document. To be more logical and in a user-friendly format. We broke it down into sections, for instance, we've got our general provisions, our districts. The tools we use to evaluate the plans, the procedures that we actually use and then administration. We added additional graphics and tables and we've removed outdated uses and standards and added new. Uses and standards. The authority to write, revise or update the zoning ordinance is defined in the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, which is PA 110 of 2006. This process is laid out so that the Planning Commission drafts the document, Planning Commission holds a public hearing. Makes the recommendation to City Council. And then the Planning Commission transmits a copy or comments from their meeting, the public hearing. To City Council and I do believe that that has been provided to you in your packet. Then the City Council's job is to review and adopt this. After that, hopefully, we're anticipating a publication, once we've approved both the first reading and second reading. Publication in a newspaper and then seven days after that, it will become effective. In your packet, I provided a timeline as to where we have been and proposed timeline if everything goes. Goes according to plan. There were some minor changes. Resulting from our meeting, the March 1st meeting, they were March 1st joint meeting of the Planning Commission and City Council. These were primarily small edits, numbering and some clarification of language that was made. The city attorney has reviewed that as well, I today provided you at the request of council member a red line markup. Of those changes so that you can see the difference between the two documents. I provided a planning department report in the city manager's. Report to you that addressed the questions that were raised at the last City Council meeting when you set this public hearing. And I'm happy to answer any of those questions further, if you'd like to discuss those. I think what's most important is that this zoning ordinance is presented as a complete document. If the City Council wishes to explore any particular sections, they should, you know. Do, they should have the Planning Commission revisit those particular sections. I can't emphasize enough that the zoning ordinance is a complete document, there are many sections that work off of each other. And we can't just examine one section alone, we have to look at each section and see how it affects other districts. And other standards and so there's a lot of work that goes involved into that. But certainly that could be something that Planning Commission can be done with the direction of the City Council. Again, I am happy to answer any questions you have regarding any of the information I have provided. Or if there's any questions or clarification from public comments, I'm here to answer and so is Mr. Avantini.
Thank you, Ms. McIntyre. Counsel, if you could do me and the folks here a favor and. Address who it is you're asking the question to by name, so we know who needs to answer, so council member Dilke, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I am speaking to Ms. McIntyre, I have a few questions in a row. So what would be a time difference, let's say, let's just say we tabled this because we were interested in entertaining. The changes that Mr. Heinanen was talking about, what would be the difference? Let's say we tabled it and said we wanted Planning Commission to reexamine this or whatever we wanted to do with that. And then come back and review it again as a full document. As opposed to us approving it now and then saying, let's examine this. Later down the line, what would be a time difference, would there be an enormous time difference?
Certainly, it could be several months, because like I stated, it's more than just looking at one section, we have to then. First of all, we would do research, we would compare and look at other communities, see what other communities are doing. We provide that research, then we would also have to talk about how it affected other portions of our zoning ordinance. Getting all that information together, providing options, having the city attorney look over it and then having the discussion, so you know. It could be two months plus in order for that to happen.
Think that I did not ask the question very well.
I'm sorry.
So, no, that's good information, that would be the one option, but the second option would be, what if we pass this? What if it got passed and then. Mr. Heinanen or whoever went down the path of asking, you know, the Planning Commission to revisit this, revisit those areas. And then, you know, go through that whole process, how long would that take?
Well, it would be the similar, it would be similar, several months, at the direction the City Council could make a formal request to the Planning Commission to review that. And then the consultants, we would start working on that and so again, that would take, you know, could take a couple of months to get that in front of the Planning Commission. And have them review it and then them make a recommendation to council to make those amendments.
Okay, so I guess, just going down this line, I did spend a lot of time, I talked to our city manager and I did talk to Mr. Heinanen. Just to, just really, I know, don't want to ever feel like I'm dismissing a, one of our business owners without really giving it. A lot of thought and. I really, I guess I want to really understand what it is. Because I, the reason for a public hearing, I would assume, is for people to bring things up so that we can consider these and we don't just make a decision. Without entertaining their thoughts, so I guess I just really wanted to understand what it is that we. We as a city, what is, what is it hurt, what are the concerns? You know, with the flag lots and some of the other questions that he had and I, I know that's a big ask, but. I just want to make sure I fully understand what the issue is and why we would not want to entertain those things.
Well, primarily, the way the zoning ordinance is written is to protect the health, safety and welfare of the public, so for instance, flag lots, there can be. Problems with emergency access and then talking about using an easement as access as opposed to frontage. Easements are not always built to public standards, we don't know that a fire truck can get back, you know, using an easement, we don't know that the fire truck can. You know, get to a building via that easement, so there are. Things that are established to protect the general public health welfare like I stated. Flag lots are not, first of all, the state does have an ordinance or a state statute that. Talks about a depth-to-width ratio, which was mentioned, they do set the standard, they do allow for. Them to be exceptions, but each community can, may do that on their own, however they do. Which was not listed, was not stated, there are criteria that need to be provided as far as that and the examples in the statute that they cite are. Environmental concerns or topography, so there's recognition that there are unique circumstances. But it's really not a good use of the land to stack buildings, one on top of each other, behind each other. For access, for circulation, for fire safety. You do have problems with that, so you know, the Planning Commission spent, like I said, it's been six years that they've been working on this and we've had many iterations. We've had many meetings, open to the public and honestly, this, this has really precipitated. Because of a request that someone wanted, one individual wanted to handle, so all this is coming up now at this time. The Planning Commission, you know, was and feels very confident about what they've submitted to you. So again, if that is something you want us to look at, we can certainly do that, but. In totality, we've looked at this as one entire package, health, safety, access. Property rights. Those are just some of the things, Carmen, do you have anything that you want to perhaps add?
Yeah, thank you, Kelly, mayor, members of council, good evening, good to see you all. Yeah, this is, I mean, remember, we have to apply these standards to every single property throughout the community. And if we start changing sections that make a lot of sense to fit one particular property. You just don't know what the repercussions will be down the line, it could create dozens of other issues with. Properties throughout the city that you may not have thought about. So it really is important to think about the potential impact it could have, the other thing to keep in mind in this particular case too is. This particular property owner's building is that he's proposing to redevelop is located in the central business district. And we, the way we set up the downtown area is a planned unit development. The Planning Commission has the ability, if they think it's a good project and what they're proposing, they have the ability to grant waivers. To a project like this, so you know, and it already frankly has been to the zoning board of appeals and they turned down those variants. Requests for this particular project, so once again, it's just, it's a, it's. A bad idea to base a zoning ordinance on a specific project, if. If this project makes sense, there are other avenues that they can apply under, they've tried under the old ordinance. Once again, the new ordinance, they'd have the ability to apply the Planning Commission. Board of Appeals and if they think it makes sense, they will have the ability to grant those waivers without impacting the rest of the city. And impacting the zoning ordinance.
So, thank you, so what you're saying, I just want to make sure that I'm right on this, that if, if this. Passes, they become part of the central business district, then they could go just to the planning board for a waiver. Not necessarily back to zoning.
Yes, any dimensional, dimensional variances that we typically call them would become waivers and they could be granted. By the Planning Commission as part of an overall site plan approval. We would just have to look at whether each and every one of these would fall under that. The flag lot issue would, the loading and unloading would, it's a question of whether the access to the property would. Be a dimensional request or not, if not, they could always apply back to the ZDA for a single variance instead of several variances. So there are other options available, but I think one of the things that was mentioned too is. During the public hearing, there was mention made of all the other communities that don't have flag lot requirements, those are all townships. Cities do require this and keep in mind too, way back when, I hate to admit. That I was around them, but when they adopted the State Land Division Act, one of the primary reasons for doing that. Was to gain better control over flag lots because a previous land division act did not do that. So that was one of the main reasons for, for putting these requirements in there, so obviously somebody at the state level, both. Whoever was, you know, whichever legislator was proposing the bill, but also the rest of the folks that voted on it. Had to think that this was an important issue to put it into the state act.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kimmel, go ahead.
The, the situation with Heinanen, if it does become. If this does, is, this is adopted, excuse me. They do have the ability to go to planning and work their wares over there. Personally. My view on this whole thing is that we're trying to protect, we're trying to create an environment. Where the CBD can actually fulfill some of our real needs and the idea of having one little lot. In that area that should. Almost certainly be redeveloped. From the parking lot all the way back behind the. The gas station there, I'd hate to end up losing some grand scheme. Development that actually fills our master plan. Because we want to entertain the idea of one little nugget of that property. Becoming kind of a thing that might end up not making the rest of that grander scheme viable. I really, I caution us to, to overreact on something that. Quite honestly, I don't begrudge them taking their shot. In the long run, I don't see this being a substantial. Advancement for the downtown, so I think it will end up ultimately being a much better use. If it's composed into the grander scheme of all the property that Mr. Carroll owns from Liberty over to that lot, so. That's my two cents worth, I did want to also add that some of these titles in the. The new document such as section 10230, in the original document, it was actually called. Requirements or non-residential design requirements slash building facade design, in the new document. It's labeled as mechanical. In the new document, it's labeled as mechanical equipment and utilities and that one just doesn't seem. Parallel. So I, I did ask that red line and unfortunately. Obviously, I worked today and the idea of getting enough time to be able to. Really filter through that was, was not going to happen tonight. So I, I think there's still some things that'll let, end up needing addressed or pointed out and I don't know that they're consequential, but. Certainly it'll make getting through the, the volumes of that document. Easier if the titles reflect what's actually in those areas, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Kittle. Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have several questions that I would like to raise. I'll start with the one that's a primary. And that is regarding the conforming easements, the. And the loading issue. As to having access. To a lot through an easement, what would be wrong with putting in the ordinance that the easement itself. Had to fit the requirements of traverse, just like what Kelly was talking about. Has to be wide enough for a fire truck, has to be wide enough for. An ambulance. Why couldn't you say that? If the easement conforms with other. Ordnances of traverse in terms of access, why, why would you be opposed to having that easement? Being used for access? And that would go to Kelly.
Ms. McIntyre, you're still muted.
Right, okay, sorry. Um, yes, so you know, we certainly can look at that. I will say that on commercial roads, the minimum width is, I believe it's thirty five feet back of curb to back of curb. So if you're looking at utilizing an easement as access, it needs to be at a minimum, like I say, back of curb thirty five feet. Curb gutter, the amount of pavement. And once you, once you start looking at that and then you add the sidewalks for access. The lot size is going to significantly increase and then, you know, right now we have it as sixty foot minimum. We could look at going smaller, but again, admit, you know, it would have to. Be at the engineering minimum standards, which again, we're looking at almost forty feet for frontage. Or access width.
And, and Carmine, this question goes to you and you were talking about the, the. The land act that was passed and the differences between cities and between townships. So what is the difference other than the name of the entity? One is the township and one is the city. Land is land. So what difference does it make where it lies? If townships are allowing this provision. What is it about the land in a city? That we're not allowing it?
Mr. Mayor, the, yeah, well, with regard to the land division act, that was applied to all communities, but. With reference to the townships versus the cities, townships typically have a lot more land to work with. They're working with bigger parcels. And I think they have a little more flexibility when they're looking at especially existing flag lots. Even most of the ones that I've worked with, not even though we work primarily with cities and villages, the ones I have worked with, they still. Do not encourage the creation of flag lots. In cities. You know, you just typically don't see very many of these cases there. You know, typically when you have something that is a, a, a flag, it's usually a small piece like the one that was being discussed and what you look to do is. Consolidate it with other parcels and redevelop them jointly as opposed to not only. Keeping it the way it is, but, but creating a flag lot would be, I mean, just something you don't do, especially if you're talking in a traditional downtown area. So. All the, all of the examples that, I mean, in Kelly's letter, she provided. Cities and what cities in the area typically do and cities do not allow the creation of new flag lots. I mean, that's just something they don't do.
Because, because they're cities?
Well, yeah, there's a difference between cities because typically cities have. More condensed developed, development are usually more fully developed. And it could create more problems than you'd get in a township that typically is a lot more land available to it.
And, and how, let, let's say that this does go through, how will that create a problem for the business owners? I just want to know what, what are the problems for other business owners? If this request is granted.
If you, Mr. Mayor, if you allow, if you in the ordinance, you don't put lot depth to width. Restrictions on it and you, and you allow flag lots to be created, you could have people splitting existing lots that might be functioning. Fine, in order to create lots that aren't usually shaped, that are located, you know, pieces of property. That are located behind, you know, existing buildings, other uses. And it's just in, in a city where you've got more tight development, it could create additional problems. Especially when you have, you have residential backing up to commercial. And I could see where that would be a challenge too, where you're creating uses to the rear of a property where you've currently got some. Separation between the business and the residential property.
And what is the issue with the loading?
Yeah, the, I mean, loading is an aesthetics issue primarily. I mean, envision downtown and having a bunch of loading docks facing out on the, the front. And, and believe me, I can tell you, we review projects all the time in a wide variety of cities and. Without exception, they all require unless there's an unusual situation, they require. The loading decks to not face out onto the road. It's an aesthetics issue. Not to mention you have trucks that will be backing in right off the main road. And could slow down traffic on that road. Just without, I mean, obviously you have unusual situations like downtown Royal Oak where. It's already been developed, you know, a long time ago and they don't have the ability to. Load and unload where they want. You could see trucks parked in the middle of the street.
Oh, yeah.
In the suicide lane. But for the most part. You know, it went in tight development, you want to make sure that you're putting as many of the, those, let's call them undesirable activities. Things you don't want people seeing from an aesthetics point of view. You put them behind the building or at the worst on the, on the side of the building, but typically try to put them to the rear. You know, you might, you could still have a building, an existing building that has no rear access. And they, the truck ends up pulling up at the sidewalk and they wheel things in and they have to load from the front door. You're never going to eliminate that completely. But for the most part, we don't want to create new activities where that loading is taking place out in front.
Well, i- i- you know, you, you have a situation where you have a very small downtown. It's, it's not like you've got a five block downtown area. It's probably one of the smallest downtowns in the area. You know, it's smaller than Milford's, smaller than Northville's. So the downtown is small. And so what you want to do is to give every business. An opportunity to succeed, because I think it's just that much more important. It's not like you can spread out. You know, very much. It's, it's a very small, two block, maybe two and a half block downtown. And so you have a business owner that wants to come to counsel and wants to. Bring his story as to why it's important for these issues to be included. In a zoning ordinance. And I just can't believe that he would be doing this unless there was an absolute need and an necessity. To do it. Does he have other options? Yeah, he may, but those options aren't guaranteed. What he's looking for is a guaranteed solution that he can move forward with whatever he. Wants to do. And, and I don't like closing out success. This is a business owner that is very successful. And we are very fortunate to have this individual in the city, but I will tell you, Ann Arbor does. This kind of stuff. This is not out of the realm of Ann Arbor. If there's a niche that needs to be taken care of to. Assist a property owner in development, that kind of niche zoning is done. You know, I, I, how we solve it, I don't know, but I don't feel good. Just carte blanche saying to a business owner, well, you had your shot at the planning commission, so go home. You know, that's, that's not a solution to me. We are the elected officials. We are the ones charged. With the responsibility of solutions and, and I just am not real. I, I, I just don't like that kind of answer. You know, we've already done it. You've already had your bite at the apple and I go home. No. Planning commission are appointed, the rec, they recommend. We are the elected officials. So I, I just would like to know if, if there is some way we can accommodate. These issues, whether it's through a special land use that we give him or something. I don't know. I don't have the answer tonight, but that's, that's my first question. And I'll make my other issues quick, Mr. Mayor. I did have an opportunity to speak with Kelly this afternoon. And I brought up several issues with her. The first one deals with the. Ordinance 102 dash 10. This is adult and childcare facilities. Allowing these facilities in an R1. And allowing them in, I believe, one RAs, R twos and R threes. And I noticed that there are special land uses. Required for adult foster homes when there are twelve or fewer adults. So I don't understand why we don't require a special land use. For those where there are six or fewer. So that's one of the issues. I think there's a state statute that comes into play. Kelly was gonna look at putting a footnote in there. So that if that state statute changes, then our ordinance automatically changes and it becomes not formidable. Because I don't know if that statute is going to be there forever. So that's the first issue is allowing these kinds of activities in residential areas. I don't know if you want me to go through all of them or let Kelly and.
Councilwoman Kurtzwell, sorry. It, it appears as if City Attorney Amami may have a comment on that, if that's all right.
Yep.
As for the differences between six and less residents. Versus twelve and less, it's strictly state law. It is, doesn't give locals an option when it comes to. Six and less residents of a state licensed residential facility. It has to be allowed. In a residential district and treated the same as all residential uses. So that's the reason for that. And the reason a larger state licensed residential facility, you can have. A special land use. It's because the state law specifically says you can. It's really the six and under where you, you can't, you really can't treat it any different than any other residential use.
But the six and under is a commercial activity.
Not under, not under the zoning enabling act. It makes it absolutely crystal clear that we are hands off when it comes to that. We have to treat it as a residential facility, consistent with any other residential dwelling, just like a six person family.
Okay, all right. So. Well, what happens if they repeal that statute?
So the reason I was shaking my head when you said that is you really can't. Adopt something that may happen in the future because you don't know what that's going to look like. So you would then have to amend your zoning ordinance the way you want it in the future. It's, it's some, it's, it's similar to, for example, the international fire codes. They come out every three years. You can't say adopting it as amended in the future because you actually have to know what you're adopting at the time.
Okay. And what is the reason for not allowing churches to operate in? An industrial district. As Kelly and I were sort of talking. You know, many of these pop-up churches start in an industrial district because. They need a place where they can bring in their, their musicians. They can bring in their chairs. They need room. They don't have the parish yet to go out and buy land, so they're building their, their network that they're, that they have. And, and I would think that that kind of use in an industrial area has less wear and tear on the roads because you're not. Engaging in a lot of heavy truck traffic. You know, as you would if it was an industrial site. And, and if I'm a landowner and it's a recession and my. Industrial facility is empty because all the businesses have gone under. But I have a couple of churches that want to rent the space, you know, on a weekend. Why, why are we not allowing that use? Well, what's the justification? That's, that's it. Lisa, I, I guess.
City Attorney Amami, go ahead.
I can't address from a planning perspective why you would choose not to allow it in industrial. What I do want to point out however is, as we mentioned, when we had the joint meeting. You can't separate churches. It's going to be place of assembly. So you can't say churches are allowed in a district and a movie theater isn't. Wherever you allow movie theaters, you have to allow churches because they're all under the umbrella of places of assembly. So that I just wanted to address that legal aspect. As far as a planning aspect, I can't tell you why you wouldn't. Legally, you could. So I defer to Kelly and or Carmine on that.
But are other communities allowing this, this use?
As a place of assembly?
Yes.
Oh, I, yeah, I mean, there's no legal prohibition for including it in an industrial district is what I'm saying. It's really a planning. A planning question.
So what, so Kelly, why was it excluded from an industrial use?
Well, I, I went back through our minutes and there was not a discussion that specifically said we do not want it in an industrial area. So as to why it's not there, it just wasn't some, a use that was decided was a good use in industrial. I, I have a feeling it has to do with the fact that, you know, industrial, we have very limited industrial. Property within our city and that tax base that we, that they would want to keep and, you know. So I, I think that there's that kind of constraint, but you know. In other communities, it is permitted in industrial areas and others it's not. It's really a choice, the community's decision as to whether they would like to do that. And again, under the umbrella of places of assembly.
But, but the, the tax base doesn't change because the use has changed. If it's in a commercial area, it's taxed as a commercial industrial facility. So why, why does the tax base change? Because the tenant is now a church. Just because the church is a 501(c)(4) through the IRS, that is their whatever. And they don't pay taxes, but the church doesn't own the industrial property that they're on. They're only a renter. So what, why was, why would the tax base change?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was saying, maybe you'll answer this as an assessor. If the fact that the church does in fact buy the property. And they own and occupy that and they are a 501(c)(3) or (c)(4), whatever it may be, that property would become tax exempt. If they do own the property, we could not necessarily restrict a church from buying a industrial property. And locating their church there. So if they are exempt, incorporated laws of the state of Michigan, owned and occupied in the state of Michigan. And they pass the four-part test, that property and all the equipment, everything within it would be exempt.
But they have federal rights, Paul.
You're right. They, they do, but they would not pay taxes. That's the point I was trying to make. I was just following up with what she said regarding taxes. But if they do in fact rent it, it's another issue and that gets reviewed by the equalization department, the assessor.
Yeah, because it, I, I'm only looking at the rental side of it. You know, that, that's the only thing that I was interested in was, was on the rent side. The next one deals with, and I did go back and I wasn't able to make that joint hearing on the first. I was actually at a, another. Event with Moderna and the Pfizer vaccine people, but. I went back and watched that video several times and, and did not. Have a, a good grasp that that issue was really discussed much. So I think that's kind of why I brought it up a little bit today. Non-conforming uses in 102, 226. It says you can only repair fifty percent of what. Uh, it says, uh, you can only repair fifty percent of what, uh, happens to be. You know, that you're going to repair and anything beyond the fifty percent, it loses its nonconforming. Is is that correct? Okay, so I have a shed in my backyard. And my neighbor's house catches on fire and it burns my house down and it burns my shed down. Through no fault of my own. My house can be rebuilt to the footprint, but now you're saying that that nonconforming shed cannot be rebuilt. Okay, next on one oh two thirty six, this is the personal ice rink. Uh, when you have a personal ice rink in your yard. Uh, and it's only from like November to maybe March, uh, where they're allowed to have it. If I want to put, I I I can't because I live on a hill. My backyard is a hill. Um, well, let's say I want to put an ice rink in my backyard. Uh, does that mean? That I have to look at whether or not I meet the impervious test? Does that impervious test of taking up ten percent of the land include? Does that get calculated into whether I put in the seasonal ice rink?
That is actually. I'm sorry, that's a, that's a good question that what that has not been addressed and wasn't addressed. Only I I think that it because of the temporary nature of it, it's not permanent. Um, that we probably would not, um, include that in the impervious, um, surface coverage.
Okay, and, um, just, uh, two more issues. When I was out at the, uh, citywide garage sale, which everybody loved, by the way. Uh, I had an opportunity, uh, people obviously know I'm a gardener and and like gardening. So everybody wanted me to see their gardens. So as I'm looking at people's gardens, they're telling me what they want to do in their backyard. And the issue has come up and it wasn't just one place. There were actually two subdivisions where this issue. Was, um, it it was commented on and and I was a little bit surprised. And we talked about this and this deals with impervious, uh, ratios to the land. You have homeowners out there that would like to create what what they're calling a a living room patio. Where now because of COVID, I people, we have encouraged people to move outside, take their activities outside. And they now want to have these expansive, uh, decks where they now can. Put a kitchen outside for barbecuing, uh, a fire pit out in the back. Uh, uh, one gentleman that I spoke to wants to put a fireplace out in his backyard. And in the fireplace, I he wants to put an indoor outdoor TV. Because, uh, he he doesn't see himself or his kids going to a movie theater again. So they will be sitting in the backyard with Netflix, um, and watching movies. So as this trend to moving into the backyard as an extension of the house. Um. How does this ratio of ten percent, um, impervious, uh, fit in to those individuals? That want to contain their family in this very closed environment. Um. I I saw where it's ten percent. Uh, is there any ability to increase that maybe to fifteen percent for people? That this is huge. This is huge for people.
Let's back and go ahead.
Yes, um, okay, so, um, as I I, um, talked with Ms. Kurtzwell earlier today that that was something. The impervious, um, service coverage was something that we looked at pretty extensively. I think it was, uh, not quite two years, maybe even three. Um, and ten percent was the number that we came up with. Um, you know, when I, you actually look at the minimum square footage of a lot of our lots. In the R two, the minimum area is nine thousand square feet. So that means that. A occupant or, you know, a property owner could have nine hundred square feet of decking and patio. That that's pretty substantial. I mean, that that's a pretty large area. Um, so, you know. Certainly, that is something that could be looked at, but I I feel like the planning commission and the city council looked at that at at length. Um, a couple of years ago. I will note that, um, the. Lot coverage area is, uh, in R three, which has seven thousand two hundred square foot lots. Um, is a little bit greater. It is fifteen percent, um, because those lots are that much smaller. Um, but again, when you're talking about a fifteen thousand square foot lot and you're restricting it to ten percent, that's one thousand five hundred square feet of. Of, um, decking or patio or pool that they are permitted. Um, and and so really that's the, it's a policy decision and decision of the city as to whether they would like to see that increase. Um, but we did, there was quite a bit of discussion, um, on that.
Well, things have changed. You know, three years ago, we didn't have a pandemic. And and we're not out of the woods. And this isn't going to be the first time, I think, in my life that I'm going to see this happen. I I'm not going to get into to all the other stuff, but uh, there's a certain reality to what's happening. This isn't going away soon. It's going to be another summer in your yard. Next year, you may get out a little bit more, but it's here. I mean, this COVID is here and if it isn't COVID, it's going to be something else. And families are finding a way to adjust and get on with their lives. And they're doing it through expanding the home and controlling their environment. So I I think that's that's where they're coming from. And as long as they meet the setbacks. You know, what's wrong with with giving somebody a little bit more? If it, if it keeps them in the city and keeps them happy and, um, they're now moving to line township where they have a a bigger. Backyard because some of those lots over in the township are huge that you could probably put whatever you want. So, um, so there's that, um. Uh, Carmine, did you want to comment on that issue?
Um, yes, Mr. Mayor, if I could, um. I I mean, the thing, first of all, I hope you're very wrong about the pandemic thing.
I don't think I am.
Because if if you're, if you're right, I may retire early, um, even though I keep threatening to do that anyway. The, um, the the thing I think we need to keep in mind is we have a master plan and this. And we're we're matching the ordinance up with the master plan. And the things that it says, including the goals and objectives. And this ordinance is intended to last for a long time, hopefully past the pandemic. And hopefully pass, you know, all these other, you know, things that we keep hearing about in terms of requests and. And people thinking of doing things with their property. But the one thing I I kind of the phrase that I use all the time and we use it jokingly, but it's true. Is that people, nobody likes to be told what to do with their property until somebody does something next door that they don't like. And then they come to the sitter and city wondering why you're not controlling that. And we deal with in in all the communities we work with, we deal with far more of the people that call in. And complain about somebody doing something next door that they don't in like, including lot coverage. Um, then we do people who say, well, I don't like your regulations and. You know, I don't want to either. I don't want to move there. I don't want to live there or whatever it might be. We deal with far more of the complaints that come in. About people doing things next door. So, I mean, you have to, it's it's not always a person. It's the, once again, it's the bigger population that we're dealing with. When we look at a zoning ordinance and if there are unusual circumstances. We do have relief valves because we can't write an ordinance. That will fit every single circumstance. That's why we have the planning commission. And that's why we have the zoning board of appeals to deal with those unusual situations like that. So. Um, I mean, that, once again, the ordinance is intended to apply to just the broad spectrum as opposed to. An individual case who are there or they might have unusual circumstances. So. I'm just asking, eh, one other point I want to make too is with any zoning ordinance. Um, once we start working with it and it's in every community where we do zoning ordinance, once we start working with it. You can fully expect within six months, a year, that we're going to come back with amendments because there are going to be certain sections. That we work with that work a little differently than we expected them to because every community is a little bit different. So if we're working with certain sections of this ordinance and we're finding, hey. This isn't quite working the way we want. That's the opportunity to come back and make changes and tweak it and fine tune it. So we could run into some unique things here and there, but you'll have more opportunities to change that within the first year when we come back with those amendments.
Okay, um, and last, uh, when I was looking at the table of contents. If I think if you start at about one oh two fourteen, just at the table of contents. And go all the way down, you will find out that those section numbers do not correspond to the text on the inside of the document. So, um, so you need to go in and and fix that. And the one thing I will say. Is that I have done, um, conditional land use issues. And I can't tell you how pleased I was with the conditional land use, um, section in and in the new, uh, ordinances, um. Uh, long time coming, long time coming. So thank you for that. Um, I'm done. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtzwell. Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I think it's, uh, it's been discussed a couple of things here. One. That, uh, the point that Carmen brings up that this is a, uh, an evergreen document. Okay, it's, uh, it's not set in stone. It can be modified going forward. Uh, as is, as it is deemed necessary. The other thing that's, uh, that's brought up and it and it's it's a little, it's a little aggravating that, uh, you know, and I understand the reason for it when, uh. People go to provide justification for. Why they want things and are selective about the information they provide, leaving leaving out. Certain details that, uh, here's what other municipalities, uh, do. Uh, and it's not an apples to apples comparison. I find that, uh, I find that a little irritating. It's a city to a township. I find it a little irritating when we provide examples of, uh, here's flag lots in the city. Well, those could have been created eighty to a hundred years ago. And the fact that we made a mistake eighty to a hundred years ago, doesn't mean that we need to replicate it going forward. Back in the forties, we had, uh, commercial buildings, uh, that were housed in Quonset Huts on Lafayette, uh, on Lafayette Street. We certainly wouldn't do that nowadays. And that's the whole purpose of looking at the, uh, the zoning ordinances. It's designed for the future. To avoid repeating the, uh, the mistakes of the past. And you'll listen to the experts, uh, on the situation, the city engineer. You'll listen to the state law. They've encountered this problem far more than we have. They've put certain things into effect for a reason. And I think we ought to, we ought to acknowledge the expertise and take it into consideration when we look at a document like this. Now, this individual, I mean, you know, basically this document, I know that, uh, the Kelly and the, uh, planning commission and so forth, they've been working on it for a long time. They've been waiting to get the document finalized. I know there's departments within the city. That are waiting for this, this, uh, document to be finalized so they can put it into effect and do their job and do it effectively. And to think that we would hold, hold up the process for one individual. Who has self imposed hardships. It's it's unconscionable. What Mr. Heiden would like to do, I mean, he could certainly do, just buy the entire lot. From Liberty Street on back and do what you you want to play, you plan to do with the, uh, with the property and you could do that. When you try to shoehorn it in and you need five variances. You got to ask the question, something's not right here. Why, why isn't this working? And it's because the zoning ordinances are meant to avoid that type of a situation. This is an important document. I think the, uh, C I B and the planning commission's done a great job looking at it. Everybody's had a chance to provide input to it for an extended period of time. And I personally think it's, uh, it's time to move forward on it. And to that extent, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the motion to approve the first reading. Of the proposed zoning ordinance and map for the city of South Line.
I have something to say.
Okay, Councilmember Richards, just a moment.
I'll support.
Okay, that's, I will, I saw your hand go up. I wanted to check on that. All right, we have a motion in a second. Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh. My question, uh, is, uh. More or less of of a statement and a, uh, a company request for an opinion. Uh, from Mrs. Kelly McIntyre and Carmen can feed in on it also. Um, I want to make a, uh, just a review, uh, of of a fact, okay, uh. When I was an activist, I made up. A survey of the vacancies that we had on Lafayette and Potiak Trail, all the way from one end of the city to the other. And it fluctuated back then between twenty nine and thirty one. Okay, well, we've got, still got a lot of vacancies and some of them are big. But, uh, it's down quite a bit overall. Now. If we're going to enact something, okay, or we, uh, forbid, we might table it, uh. But growing on the, all of these issues, okay, and the overall impact of this. Uh, new ordinance, uh, which is, it was, it's a great improvement over the last one. There's no question about it. Um. What is your opinion, okay, Kelly, of, uh? The impact that this will have on increasing the number of occupancy of businesses that are vacant, okay? Along this whole district, okay, of our town, which is, uh, needs to be, uh. Encouraged to, uh, fix up so we can have better business climate. Also, the other, the last two items, uh, are, uh, to feed in on this is. Will any of this ever give us the chance? To have a real motel or a motor lodge come into this town? Or even a small hotel somewhere along the line? And, uh, in your opinion also. When can we expect in a timeline for businesses to pick up? In this, given the view of the size of our community, our location and everything and, uh, competing interests? Can you give us a timeline when you think our city will start to show improvement? Okay, when we enact, uh, uh, something, okay, for our new ordinance here? And finally, uh, just a comment, okay, that no answer required. Uh, our historical sites and locations in this whole, the whole thing, I've read the whole thing. There's no guarantee as I see it. However, it is implied. But I see no definite guarantee that any of them will be preserved for our historical heritage. And we have no real protection from development and obliteration, uh, in the future as I see it. Now, Carmine, I'd like to get your input on this if you care to feed in on any of this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, the, um, I I think it's a very multifaceted question and, um. You know, with regard to business and and development, um, it just, it it take, we've got a game plan in place. And it's about doing all the little things on a daily basis that add up to it. And I think. Putting this zoning ordinance in place is certainly going to give us one of the tools. To keep the stuff from happening that would hinder our implementing the master plan. I mean, the master plan calls for mixed use, multi-story buildings. Obviously, the economy right now is is kind of in flux because of the pandemic, but it's not going to last forever, contrary to what. Ms. Kurtzwell indicated, and I hope she's wrong, um, but yeah, things, it it really takes, um, a long term perspective. In doing those things on an ongoing basis, unto encourage development. I mean. I I use the example and I know people get tired of hearing it, but I've been the planner in in Fenton for twenty seven years. And the downtown was a mess. It was an urban renewal pedestrian mall, a loop road around the downtown. And if you look at it now, it's pretty amazing. We're just get, we just got our third multi-story building. And we're getting two new downtown restaurants smack dab in the middle of the pandemic. So not, not that, not to claim that we've been. You know, the sole reason for that happening. It's certainly been a team effort, but we've always had a good game plan. We've had a good master plan, a good game plan. We had a group of. Of elected officials and city managers and staff that have stuck with that game plan. And in including the ordinances and it's, it's been very important. So. Kind of in response, I think that that's the, that's what really helps businesses and helps investment. It makes for a great downtown. Um, in 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 community and including if you want to get a, eventually get a hotel, a boutique hotel downtown. It's having a good game plan and sticking with it and not allowing. The little side distractions along the way. I can't tell you how many times in that, uh, in Fenton's downtown. That we turned down different types of development, um, and they were going to give the city a lot of money. To be able to do that and they turned it down because it didn't fit their game plan. So as we talk about the ordinance and little things here and there, think about the master plan. Think about what you decided you wanted the downtown to look like. And, uh, and help give us the tools to to make that happen. I mean, there's a lot more to it, but. Having a good zoning ordinance keeps the bad stuff from occurring that creates problems for us.
Yeah, thank you very much, Carmen.
Thank you. Councilmember Dill, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick procedural question. What if this uh, what if this motion fails? What happens? What, what's the uh, what would be the next step on this then? I just honestly don't know. Anybody know?
I mean, if it doesn't move, if you don't move it forward to second reading?
Yes.
It doesn't ultimately get adopted.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Well, what you do is you come to the table and you compromise and you address those issues that have been raised that, that present concern and you, you do what they should be doing in Washington DC. You come to the table and you compromised. That's what you do. And this, and it can be done in two months. I mean, we're not talking about major issues that take months and months to um, uh, to research or do whatever, come to the table with a solution. It's not that difficult.
Councilmember Walton, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm having a little bit of a hard time wrapping my head around the fact that we might be moving something forward that the titles don't match. There's items in here that are missing, that are stated that are there. And that, that's where I'm having a hard time along with some of the things that have been brought to the table that need to be maybe addressed. So, if you move it forward, do we get to correct those things?
Carmine, just a moment. City Attorney Hamamay, did you wanna take that?
I, I was just gonna say, you can always send it back to the planning commission with direction to revisit issues. But I think uh, listening to what Kelly indicated that they'd already addressed those issues, I don't know that you'll get anywhere. You could then, after it goes back to planning commission, if you're still not happy, you can then make whatever changes you wanna make.
Thank you, City Attorney Hamamay. Ms. McIntyre, did you have anything to add to that?
Yes, okay. Um, I should not have included the table of contents. I apologize. That should have been removed completely. This document is to be codified. It has to go to the Munich code. It gets codified. They will put it in a format with the section, um, correct titles. They have attorneys that go through and cross-check everything, make sure that every reference is correct, that everything is there. Um, so what we are doing is we are approving this draft. We are going to send it on to a professional um, organization that will codify it. We'll put it up on the internet and then we'll send us physical copies of it. I, I apologize. I should not have included that table of contents because it was inaccurate and that's, that is my fault completely. But disregard that. That really isn't, has no bearing on the contents of what is in there. Um, they will make sure that everything is numbered correctly. Um, we will get proofs. We will get to look at it again.
Thank you, Ms. McIntyre. Carmine, go ahead.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think it's important. Um, certainly, we respect all the different opinions we're hearing tonight. Um, it, but I want to be clear, in our opinion, okay, we, we don't think that we, that you should be changing this ordinance. It's a well-written ordinance. Um, it's, it's sorely needed over the current ordinance. And it can always be changed later, but we, we just don't agree with the proposal that had come forward. We didn't think it was a good proposal from the individual, and we certainly don't think that the ordinance should be changed based on a single individual application like that. We think that what we've written applies very well to the entire community. And we, we don't think we've missed anything. We're, what we're doing is done in countless communities across the board. And I can't think of any that would change an ordinance to suit the needs of particular requests. Are we gonna come back each time there's a request that the planning commission or the zoning board of appeals doesn't like and change the ordinance? Um, that, just because it's timed it right now, if it, what if it had come in six months, would it? And it, and the ordinance weren't up for adoption, would we look at it the same way? Would we want to amend the ordinance to be able to suit a particular development? Because it's a double-edged sword, because there's gonna be things that come along that you don't wanna do those things. And you're, and, and you've got a lot of opposition to it and you've done it for somebody else, okay? It's, it's, it's a very slippery slope that, that we're, we're, we're getting, we're going on here. We, we just need to be really careful that what we're adopting here applies to every situation. And for the unusual ones, once again, we have a process in place to deal with it. You might not like the decision that's made by the zoning board of appeals, or you might not ma- like the decision made by the planning commission. But it's, it's certainly not gonna be the end or the ruin of the community over a, an individual request like that. And you know, maybe sometimes, and I know there are pointed, but maybe sometimes the decision they're making is a good one. Um, and maybe, you know, like I say, more often than not with communities, you're, the quality of your community is determined more by the times that you say no than the times that you say yes. So, I, I just wanted to make it clear that we're, we're definitely not in agreement um, with the um, the, the thought of changing those three items that was, were discussed earlier. Obviously, we will respect whatever decision you wa- you make in terms of the ordinance, will support it and will work with it. But at this point in time, as we're going through this process, we do not recommend that. We think it'd be a huge mistake to put those things in the ordinance.
Thank you, Carmine. I, I see you both over there. You both, um, Councilmember Kennedy, you had a chance to speak earlier. Councilmember Kibble just seconded, so I'm gonna go to Councilmember Kibble first.
I just wanted to, to say that I, I, I don't, um, I applaud Mr. Heinenen for, for making an attempt to try to bring something new to the city and all that stuff. Unfortunately, I don't think that the value of, of that particular proposal warrants uh, us spinning out what our rules are and, and as I said earlier, to compromise the potential of the fulfilling the master plan with his property between the Liberty and Liberty Street and the uh, the back of the marathon, well, now it's a shell, be, shell uh, station. Most of the misgivings seem to me as though they're clerical things, that, you know, the, the titling of all these uh, ordinances that are codified by number, but the, the actual um, descriptor of it isn't correct. Those, those are incidental. I mean, that stuff can be, be corrected very easily. The message is still the same of what the ordinances are written up as, so that's what we should be uh, deciding whether or not we support the idea of what the message is. Or, I mean, or if we don't think that they're on the right track. And personally, I, I think this, that they've done a splendid job. There's, there's always things that you can find fault with, but I think as a grand scheme, this is pushing us very far down the road towards being able to be much more successful. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Kibble. Councilmember Kennedy?
Uh, just wanna build on uh, on that sentiment, if you will. The uh, the point is, when uh, the seven people on this council swore an oath to uh, take their seat on this board, uh, they did that with the intent of doing what is right in the interest of the city. The city as a whole, not just one individual. You've heard from the experts on what the the uh, the cons can be, if you will, of making another decision. We've heard about the need to compromise uh, from uh, Councilmember Kurtzwell, and that's, that's all well and good. But the uh, the individual already brought it to the planning commission. The planning commission did not agree with it. The individual took it to the zoning board of appeals, which was the next logical step and authorized to do so. It was voted down unanimously. He brought it to the city council and the city council voted to move it ahead because those bodies all looked at what is best for the city. And I would encourage the members on this board to continue taking that viewpoint. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, governing is about tolerance. And governing is about accepting people with different strategies, maybe of solving a problem. And um, I don't think there's anybody on the city council that's more committed to the city than maybe myself. But maybe Mr. Kennedy, you have a different opinion. It may be you. You may think you're the only person that is committed to the city. Each and every one of us has a strong commitment to the city. We listen to our business owners and our residents in different ways. We respond to their issues in different ways. That's tolerance. I am not a, a person that, that can be pushed and told, this is how you're gonna vote. You don't intimidate people that way. So, I take offense to your comment. And I will vote the way I feel is, is in the best interest of the city and the business owners. And um, that's how I'm gonna vote. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtzwell. So, we have a motion from Councilmember Kennedy, seconded by Councilmember Kibble. We've had our professional staff that we've had chosen to put this document together here for questions and comments. We still have several things on tonight's agenda. So, I'm gonna ask the council, if they have anything else they would like to speak of on this, now that we have a motion in a second. And if we do not, we're gonna vote on it and we're gonna move on.
I'll have something to say.
That's perfectly fine, Councilmember Richards. The floor is yours.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we've all acknowledged that uh, there's a tremendous amount of years and work put into this. Uh, going back, oh, I don't know, eight, nine years. Uh, and we needed something, okay? Okay, I acknowledge, some people don't like it, okay? And there's, there's, there's gonna be flaws in anything. And I would, I would ask uh, uh, the attorney, Miss, Mrs. uh, Amy, okay? Uh, we can come back and change something at, in a future time or, or tweak it or improve it, okay? But uh, in my opinion, okay, uh, this is better than what we had by a long ways. And even though there's some things that are very much weak spots, okay, as I pointed out. Okay, I think we need to move forward with the deal and I agree with Councilman uh, Kennedy and Councilman uh, Kibble. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards. Does anyone else have any comments or questions about this before we send it to a roll call vote? Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your patience on this. Um, City Clerk Deaton, could you please lead us in a roll call vote?
Walton?
No.
Dill?
Yes.
Kurtzwell?
No.
Richards?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Kellchat?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all again for your time this evening. Motion passes. Move on to new business. McCady Park Handicap Accessible Equipment.
We've received a request on the Parks and Recreation Commission to purchase the handicap accessible equipment for McCady Park. We attached the equipment description we have within this year's budget and next year's budget in dollars for this particular purchase. The bid includes a cost for installation of the equipment. Funding this purchasing does include the installation, which will come from the general fund and public and private donations that were already received on this. Materials attached, the photos of the equipment, I am I quote outlining the cost for the equipment, including description of the equipment. The course of action tonight is approve or not approve the purchase of the insulation of the WeGo swing from McCady Park from Ventura in the amount of fifty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars. We have Erica Wilson from the Parks and Recreation here, as well as the supplier, uh, Land Shipping, which represents Ventura here tonight to answer any questions they may have. And I think Erica was gonna take over and just mention a couple items. I think she wanted to share a screen for a couple items as well for Council, council to look at.
Okay, thank you. Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members for um, for your time. I have a short presentation I'd like to share with you to take you from where this started many years ago with a um, a wheelchair swing to where we have finally arrived today, which is a good day, which is really a good day. So, I'm gonna go ahead and set this up. So, um, passion has led us here. This is a picture of McCady Park. And um, passion is what led us here. Passion has led us for, um, led you to do what you're doing it with um, city council and for our city. Um, passion has led us to um, be council or to be commissioners on the Parks and Recreation Commission for the city of South Lion. And the um, professionals we have dealt with to get to finding the equipment that is um, best for what we're looking for, um, it's their passion as well. So, we, um, passion has brought us here, passion from community members and families for the equipment that we're looking at. Um, has fueled it all and has brought us all together. Now, the wheelchair swing that we originally approached city council with um, a few years ago was a platform swing that allows those in a wheelchair to receive the benefits and joy of swinging. And as you can see in this video, that this participant um, on the swing is in a wheelchair. They're secured, they're um, it could be any size of wheelchair and person. I, I believe there was a weight limit on this, but the modality is somebody who is pushing the swing for them. And also, they are the sole participant as far as um, being on the swing. It is not inclusive. Okay. Now, this is the WeGo swing that through happenstance and delays that we've had with Parks and Rec- Recreation Commission to um, dealing with insurance and other liability issues with the original swing that I had just shown to you. We um, timing just, just such that Ventura Designs have come up with this WeGo swing. And this quote here that says, I am five years old and I think this swing is amazing, says it all, but I will share part of the video with you.
I am five years old and I think this ring is amazing. I like this ring also because any wheelchair person can go on it. And any person that even doesn't have a wheelchair can go on it. Yeah, and, and we can all play together.
I, I think he sums it up. I, I don't, I can't say it any better than that, that they all can play together. This hits it out of the park when we are looking at um, an item, a piece of equipment that is inclusive where they all can be together. So, do you have any questions?
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
Uh, it's, it's much a comment. Uh, I, I applaud everything that you guys have done. Just, obviously, this is something that um, you're very passionate about. I, I do have a concern about costs in that the, the last iteration of this, this, this particular apparatus has raised the price by forty percent. Um, I was kinda surprised that there was no breakdown in, obviously, our role as city council. I mean, we have to be the, the mediators of what we spend money on and justifying it all and now, all that kind of business. So, um, when I saw that this is the, coming out of the general fund, public and private donations without any Public and private donations without any kind of markings of what, how the breakdown of that uh, goes. Uh, I was a little bit surprised by that. So, I was hoping that um, Paul, could you fill us in? And what component is general fund? What component is public? Uh, donations and what is private donations?
Right now, the donations that have been received for this swing that it was the um, public or private, whoever made those uh, contributions. Is three thousand five hundred ninety-seven dollars. Those were dollars that were raised by the fundraisers that they did it at various locations. The rest of it would be coming out of the general fund. It would be coming specifically out of the Parks Fund.
Is there any sense of, uh, you, you see GoFundMe opportunities and things that are very successful with an awful lot of things, and this seems like a, a perfect example of something that people would register to. So, have you guys given any consideration to looking at that as a funding source?
Ms. Wilson, go ahead.
Um, we do have some money coming from a GoFundMe account that was started by a family. Um, I do not have the exact number on that, and I don't think that was included in Paul's um, numbers.
I was just wondering if, if the um, commission might end up entertaining the idea of trying to push that angle. Clearly, kids will be delighted to have this. This will be quite an asset in the park. I love the idea that they, they will end up feeling as though they're getting the same level of activity that the kids that are running around will, you know, I mean, it gives them the same zeal of being in the park and playing that kids are in the sandbox and all that kind of stuff are. I just have concerns, but this is a big ticket item. There's, I can't think of a, a piece of equipment out there that compares with this cost. So, that causes me a little bit of concern. Uh, and are we free of liability concerns as a product of this design as opposed to the last design? Because I, I didn't see any barriers keeping kids from being in the front or back as this thing is swinging back and forth. I mean, there's, there's quite a bit of kinetic energy coming from that if the, a little kid were to end up getting hit by that. So I was wondering.
Well, we did talk about this, you know, within amongst the commission members. Um, and we talked about liability. The other one, they could not guarantee, they needed it to be fenced in based upon um, the requirements of the insurance company. Our current insurance company doesn't require this one to be fenced in. Um, it's just like, you know, other swings. Yes, there is energy that does go back and forth that people potentially could be pushed or moved or hit or something like that. But part of this inclusion was that this piece of equipment not be fenced in. And then it'd be a part of the rest of the playground and not separated from everything else and from everybody else. Um, because they wanted the children who were going to partake in this and use this. Um, as being a part of, you know, their friends or family members. And yes, it is more expensive than most equipment, but the use and the type of this equipment is very specific. And we are paying more than any other type of piece of equipment at, at the park. But the commission felt that this is the right piece of equipment at the right time for the community and for the individuals that we do need to in, include as part of our playground that we have never done before. And so that is why, yes, it is. And the good thing about it is that not just individuals. Um, who this was originally designed for, you know, making it handicap accessible, but other people can get on it as well and sit down and partake in it too. So when it's not being used, um, it's not just for one ex- exclusive use.
I would, the idea of not fencing it, I think makes perfect sense in that you don't want to make them feel as though it's an isolation location. At the same time, some protection from being able to get into the swing zone directly behind the, the uh, trolley. It, that seems kind of irresponsible to me because unlike a swing, there's a great deal more, more energy by the, the mass. You've got first off, a, a huge swing. And then you've got the, the weight of the, the people that are on the uh, the thing. And whatever apparatus they might end up sitting on to be on the thing. So, that trying to stop that is going to end up being quite a bump if somebody gets in the way of it. So, but as I said, I mean, my, my biggest uh, desire would end up being really aggressive at trying to find some supplemental funding for this uh, out of something like a, a GoFundMe campaign. So, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. We have, we've had a lot of folks raising their hand, and the order I had it was we're going to Councilmember Dill. Then we're going to go to Councilmember Walton, and then we're going to come to Councilmember Kurtzwell. So, Councilmember Dill, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, when, since I've lived here, we redid McCady Park, all the equipment and everything. Did we do any kind of fundraising for that, or how was that paid for? No? So, I would say that then we shouldn't have to fundraise to, to provide this to our residents to need other equipment to uh, participate. So I would be against doing that then. It seems, it would seem unfair. That's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Dill, Councilmember Walton, thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, one of my family members was part of the original request for this wheelchair spring, uh, swing. And so I am pleased to see this. I'm pleased to see this better um, than the first one. Because not only are you including the child or the person in the wheelchair, but their family members, their friends, other people can get involved, and that really puts them more in the center of what's going on. And that makes them feel more included. So, uh, you can't get any more DEI than this, and I, I just absolutely love it. And I would really like to make the motion to approve the purchase of the WeGo Swing from McCady Park from Ventura in the amount of fifty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars from account one-on-one dash six ninety dash nine seventy.
I would support.
Uh, Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, um, as, as to the price of this, I don't think there is any price that you can put on the heart of a mother that has a, a disabled child that goes to McCady Park and watches every other normal kid swing on a swing except for her own. You can put a price on that, then you know what? We'll go out, we'll do a fundraiser. But you can't. You cannot put a price on what that mother is going through when her child, through no blame of her own. As a child with a disability that is unable to partake in the laughter and the fun and the joy and have a moment in his or her life that is the same as every other child. Spend some time around disabled children. And may, maybe you'll get it. But the, the, this is tough for these parents. And they have been asking for this, this swing for a very long time, a very, very long time. And, and what I like about this swing is that uh, Councilmember Walton brought it up. Is that other members in the family are able to be with this child that is in the wheelchair. Uh, children who have disabilities have anxiety issues. They have separation anxiety issues. So putting them just on a swing and pushing them so that they are all away from their guardian or their family member gives them some fear on the inside that, that something may happen when they're being pushed on that swing. Here, you are controlling the child's emotions and, and securing that environment by saying, hey, mom's right here. You know, I'm not leaving you. So the design of this is brilliant. Uh, and I want to thank the Park and Rec Commission for doing just an absolutely outstanding job in, in finding a great solution for this. And, and the reason I, I suspect, and the gentleman, uh, Mr. Shipman, you might want to speak to this. But I assume that as any glider, there is a catch here that doesn't allow it to move um, too high or whatever. So, so that movement of this uh, sled here is probably controlled by the upper mechanisms. So I, I could be wrong, but there's probably only a certain degree in which it's able to extend. Additionally, on the fencing side, it's not that far off the ground. So it, so, so you don't need a major fencing around this, you know, for falling when you don't have a, a, a piece of equipment that, that is too far off the ground. You don't have fences around your average swings there. They're off the ground more than, than this is. So um, I, I'm all for it on the, the price to me. I, I, I don't even look at the price. Get it in. They've been asking for it. And if you have any question about whether or not you think you overpaid for it, go to that park the day that mother brings that child and puts that child in that wheelchair and take a picture of that kid's face. So, that's my comment. I'm voting for this. Absolutely.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
So, some practical questions now. What's the warranty on the unit? Is that you, Mr. Shipman?
Yeah, that would go to me. I, I can answer that if that's okay, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Um, so I've, I've included, I'm not sure if it made it into your packet. There is a warranty statement. Um, it's a sta-, it's the standard landscape structures manufacturer's warranty. So portions of this will be warranted up to a hundred years. Um, there are other portions that are less, things that are in movement, need some form of maintenance. But that's all been designed in with uh, oil impregnated bushings that can be replaced as opposed to having to replace full mechanisms or full pieces. Um, that's all accounted for in there. Um, so i- it's, it's the largest warranty in the industry for sure. Um, and I can share the details of that if you want. Um, but it, it breaks down depending on the actual piece of the apparatus.
Oh, you said per one hundred use? I'm not sure on what that is. Want to explain that?
Portions destruct, the structural portions will go up to a hundred years.
Hundred years? I thought you said use, my apologies. Okay? So the other part is um, we have a, a price here for uh, someone to install it. Is that your company?
Uh, it is our installer, yes.
Okay.
It, it's subcontracted to us, but it's our installer.
So since you're installing it, what's the warranty on installation?
Uh, there's tip, there's a typical one-year installation warranty, and that's just to ensure that it's installed correctly. Um, we can also provide a document from the installer, signed by them that they did install it per manufacturer specifications. Um, so you'll be fully covered. Um, I myself am local. I actually am by chance a South Lion resident. Um, the installers are actually based out of Howell, so, and my office is out of Brighton. So, we're all local. We're not going anywhere. So if anything does happen, um, you've got folks nearby to make sure that anything that needs correction gets corrected quickly.
And actually, you and I had the chance to talk about uh, these uh, these pla-, this playground equipment when you were at the suburban collection two years ago. So the
We were looking at the WeGo round.
Yeah, we did look at that at the time, right? The other question is, uh, you know, in the YouTube video you just showed, it shows, you know, first off, that the, uh, the individual in the wheelchair takes a position on either end, gets locked in with the, the bar that comes across, right?
Uh, somewhat. There's actually a little dip in the back that the wheel kind of sets into, the large wheel.
Okay, but they pull the bars down, keeps them from rolling out, right?
Right, and it also assists them in actually creating the motion.
Okay, and they also showed another wheelchair going in perpendicular to those people, not locked in.
Correct.
So, that obviously, I mean, that individual's not secured in that thing. What keeps them from rolling back out of it while it's underway? Other than if we put a sign up, the wheelchair needs to be at this end, each end.
Well, the, the motion moves side to side. Where you saw that other wheelchair in is actually perpendicular, wheeled back in. Um, and then in addition, all wheelchairs, well, I shouldn't say all because I can't claim all, but the majority of all wheelchairs have wheel locks on them that can be placed when they're wheeled in there so that it won't roll forward or backwards. But in this case, a sideways wheelchair isn't going to go sideways in a sideways motion.
I didn't notice. Was there something to prevent it from going out the back of that uh, that opening?
There, yeah, there is a, a curb or a, you can't roll straight through it.
Okay. The other thing I noticed is the uh, what I would term to be a pinch point. The clearance between the bottom of the unit and the top of the uh, cement underneath. I'm looking at a little kid's fingers getting in there. What prevents a kid crawling in there and getting his fingers in that area? And the only reason I bring that up is you look at the, the recent news report about the Peloton uh, treadmills and the problem that is, that is caused. What keeps a little kid from getting his uh, his fingers under there while somebody is moving that thing back and forth? And having that rub over the top of his fingers and pinching it and sandwiching it between that and the cement below. And again, that might get back to, I understand the fencing and the rest of it, but you certainly don't want some little kid laying down on that pad playing with the thing as it's going back and forth. I understand also, you'd hope that there'd be an adult close by that would intervene. But again, from a liability standpoint, what recommendations do you have to prevent that from occurring?
Um, trying to locate an image that I can show you, maybe
I mean, I can't tell exactly what the distance is there, but it looks adequate enough that a kid with a, you know, a little five-year-old could probably get his, his fingers in there.
Actually, there's, there's not, not really. Um, there is a skirt at the bottom. Um, so there, the way it's designed, it's basically, it's a swing, so it goes to and fro. But it's on a controlled system below the swing. Um, and then on that swing, there's a skirt that actually, one portion of it stays level while the outer portion of it moves with the swing. So there, there isn't any openings that are created as it moves.
So the skirt is always in contact with the pad below?
It, well, it's not directly in contact. It's, it's very slightly above it, but it's with, it's less than the tolerance that are allowed by the Playground Safety Code. Um, for what we would call pinching or, or infringement. Um, trying to see.
I don't know if you got a spec sheet there. Just, just out of curiosity, it's hard to, hard to see in the picture, and it was a little hard to see in the video, but.
Yeah, I'm trying, if I could, can I share my screen? Is that permitted?
City Clerk Deaton?
Permission is to do that?
Yes.
I'm going to try that. Let me open up the right document here.
While you're looking at that, what's the lead time on uh, delivery and uh, and installation of the unit?
Our standard lead time is two to three weeks from the time of order to receive the equipment. And then we try to schedule as closely thereafter as we can. Um, because we don't want to uh, hold the equipment any longer. For some reason, it's not letting me share, so. I'm not sure.
Let me ask you this, uh, Lance, if I could. Have you uh, have you had any uh, any incidents that you're aware of where kids have been uh, you know, had problems with that in any of the installation?
We have not. Um, I will also, with a caveat, this is brand new, introduced um, just this past January.
A lot of history on it.
Well, there's a lot of testing history, uh, and it's tested in the real market in, in Minnesota, out in a park. Um, and there has not been any incidents. This is actually a, a further development. Um, we also have a product called a Sway Fun that's been on the market for, for several years. That is similar in concept, but not an actual swing. It's more of a sway glider. So a lot of those same principles are applied here in a safe manner. Um, it's also IP certifications, um, which is the International Playground Manufacturers Equipment Association. Um, which is certified to comply with the Playground Safety Codes. Can you share your screen yet, Lance? I, I'm having trouble sharing the document.
Uh, that's, that's okay, Lance. I mean, you know, I just, uh, those are the concerns that I have, but it's uh, if it's the uh, you know, that's, that's what we're looking at. Uh, from a liability standpoint, that would be the concern um, that I would have. And I just want to make sure that uh, the warranty obviously is adequate for the installation. Um, you know, we're spending seventeen thousand dollars there. Uh, just looking at it, it doesn't look like uh, it's something that the, the DPW couldn't do, but uh, it, you know, I'm looking to make sure obviously that it would be installed properly and, and quickly. Appreciate the information, Lance.
Oh, not a problem. And if there's Oh, not a problem. And if there's any other questions, I can certainly expand or or even provide further documentation if needed to anybody.
Okay, thank you.
We have a motion by Councilmember Walton, supported by Councilmember Dilg, to approve the purchase of a we-go swing from McCady Park from Pensura in the amount of fifty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars from account number one zero one dash six nine zero dash nine seven eight. Do we have any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton.
I got a question.
Councilman Richards, go right ahead.
Uh. Well, okay. It looks wonderful, but uh you're gonna have teenagers climbing all over this thing when the little kids are gone and doing what normal teenagers do and uh if uh when if something needs uh some adjustment or repair or tightening. Can our DPW do it, or do we have to call the technicians uh that installed it to to uh make adjustments and get it back running again? Exactly right. Uh. What uh, you know, it's gonna get some abuse. There's no doubt about it. Thank you. That's it. Just if we can answer that question.
Was that, do you, do you Lance, go ahead? I I presume. Um, so yeah, this has all been designed for use in a public park, and it's understood in any of those situations that you know, not every piece of equipment gets used as intended. Um, that's one of the reasons this product was developed, because the other products that we have seen on the market for wheelchair swings um have have tremendous issues with misuse after hours and and potential problems with them. Um, this one is much more controlled. Um, there's not a whole lot you can overdo on this thing, meaning you can't swing it past the point that it's supposed to be swung at. You can't make it more dangerous than it is, you know. It's actually not dangerous, but you can't create a dangerous situation by misusing it. Um, and then as far as maintenance, um, it's regular maintenance, no- nothing additional. Um, it can be maintained by the DPW without question. Um, we will be providing a maintenance. Um, there's a maintenance document that comes with it for, you know, what to look at yearly, annually, you know, how to go through and inspect it. Um, and then again, I am local. If there is any issue, I'm more than happy to come by, take a look. See what needs to be addressed. If it's something DPW can do. That's great. If it's something we need to get involved with, we most certainly will. Thank you. All right. Well, if there's no further discussion, uh, City Clerk Deaton, would you please lead us in a roll call now?
Dilg?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Kurtzweil?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Hell chap?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for your time and being here tonight and helping with any of the questions that we may have had.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. We appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
You're the meeting. McCady Park Master Plan.
In two thousand nineteen, the city council approved the update in the master plan for McCady Park. The commission updated the plan to include proposed long-term improvements to the park, as well as the area adjacent to the water plant, the historical village, and the Veterans Memorial. Attaches that conceptual plan includes proposed improvements for those areas. Mark Russell from Russell Design is in attendance to go over the plan, also attendances Eric Erica and other representatives of the Park of Rec Commission. Tonight, we've attached the updated plan for McCady Park. The recommendation is to approve the master plan for McCady Park. I believe Mark is going to put this particular document and share his screen and go over and council can actually ask any questions that they may have regarding this.
Thank you, Paul, uh, council members and Mr. Mayor. I appreciate your uh time this evening. Um, so yeah, I'm going to share my screen, hopefully. Uh, let's see here. So can you all see my screen?
Yes.
All right, thank you. So just for a little orientation, let me zoom out of this a bit. Um, at the top of the page is Pontiac Trail. North is to the left. This is Dorothy Street here and McMunn Street, which is on the west side of the property. So I'm gonna start up here at Pontiac Trail and just uh present some highlights, if I if I may, to uh the revised master plan. Uh, we've been working on this with the commission members for a couple of years now. And uh part of the master plan during this process, it was kind of stalled a bit because there was a pretty conservative effort on um moving toward uh this the the accessible swing and the inclusive swing. So we took a little bit of a diversion uh from completing the master plan so that that work could be uh executed and uh and really kind of vetted through a couple of different manu- several different manufacturers. And then Lance was as kind enough to present uh the we-go swing, which he's which you guys have just seen. So what we what we've done, and I don't know, I I see some new faces on the council, but um we've we've modified the entrance to the park and and in doing so, we've aligned that with Reynolds Sweet uh Street here uh and and a light. There's a traffic signal here. Now, we we've talked to the engineer a little bit about that. We haven't talked to the county about that, about this revision yet. So there's some things that we need to still um discover with the different agencies, but what this plan represents is is a it's a working document. Uh, and you know, not unlike your zoning ordinance, you heard this evening, but it's a working document. Uh, and and there may be modifications that are required as trends change uh or programming changes. So uh, right now, this is uh the latest and greatest, if you will. Uh, so we do have a new entrance here with a right and left-hand turn uh exit lane, single lane coming in with a boulevard uh separating traffic into a small parking lot here. Uh, we've also uh part of the master plan or the revised master plan, we've incorporated a space here. Uh, it's about six thousand square feet uh for a splash pad, a future splash pad uh with an adjacent pavilion here, uh and then the existing restrooms are located right here. Uh, and adjacent to that uh existing restrooms, the council would like to uh entertain uh constructing a vending machine area where kids could get, you know, different snacks and treats and what have you while they're in the playground or in the park uh exclusively. So the the existing playground is in these two blobs right here, okay? Uh, thirty-six represents future expansion of the playground. Uh, and also with an accessible path. Excuse me, surrounding each of those play zones. Number forty-six right here is our location that we discussed uh and actually laid out on site. Uh, the location for the we-go swing that was presented to you this evening. It's approximately twenty-eight or twenty-seven by twenty-seven. So you get a good sense of uh of really that space right here. Uh, and part of the reason we were considering putting it down in this location, attached to the existing path here. But we we, there's a little bit of a hill here. And from a constructability standpoint, this seemed to be the best site, not only because of the topography, but also because of this gas line. And there's there's a few different uh uh telephone lines and things in there and other utilities that we might uh we might engage uh if we were starting to dig into this hill. That's basically right where this number thirty-six is. Uh, this also is is a nice cozy spot. It's got some nice shake trees adjacent to it. Uh, and but it it also is adjacent to the existing playground and a little bit more inclusive to the existing playground uh that that you see in number fifteen, above fifteens. This is currently where we have the swing sets, and there also is an accessible swing set in this location. This is the area where you see most of the the larger climbing uh structures in this larger area here. Some of the other changes that we made to the master plan was the acquisition, or we didn't, we didn't make that change, but you guys acquired this property down here. Uh, and part of the current budget is going to be removing this existing residence. Uh, but it was our hope that we would retain the garage in this location number forty-one so that we could have uh some maintenance of um equipment stored here. Uh, so they can mowers and what have you, all could be stored in here. There might even be a little office. Uh, but we obviously haven't got gotten into the architectural components of that. But they're roll-up doors right now, and and I think it would serve well to put some um park equipment in there, uh maintenance equipment because of its proximity, uh, you know, to the park uh inconvenience. So we have a smaller parking lot here, and I think in the initial budget, we're gonna, we're considering putting the at when we tear this down, we're also gonna build a gravel parking lot here. Um, and then with a connection directly to the trail, to the bike trail here. Uh, so if somebody wanted to come here and park then and hop on the trail, they could do so uh very easily. To accommodate the bike trail and the users there, we've also in number twenty-seven, I incorporated a a bike uh repair station and a small structure and perhaps even a picnic table uh in this location, just to sort of cater to the users of that trail system, uh and, you know, providing those amenities for them. Uh, we do have an existing entrance right down here at number seventeen, uh where it comes off of McMunn Street and in or the the trail comes off of McMunn Street uh and enters into the park. As Paul mentioned, as a part of the uh work that you guys are now doing on your water tower, we previously had a parking lot located in this look location. Uh, and now we've obviously uh uh incorporated a a water tower, another water tower in this location. And this really is an unaccessible space for the public. Uh, and it's all, you know, still utilities. There is a possibility in number forty-five to expand, you know, either future park uses and or additional parking opportunities uh along the south side of Dorothy Street. So continuing to the east is the witch's hat in the museum. Here's the um, here's the historic village uh that we had talked about, some of the changes here. We we really didn't change this from the original master plan that we did several years ago. Uh, but the key things that we've we've done uh in in this really, this whole area here, where the where the Veterans Memorial is currently uh with the relocated rock and and uh there there is a, I I think, Paul, you're gonna have to help me with this one a little bit, but there's a a possibility of acquiring a barn uh to locate a barn at number forty-four in the historic village area that would become another use uh for the visitors to uh to engage in. The biggest change that we made in this little quadrant here was we got rid of this road that cuts through here. And we made an amphitheater, sort of an outdoor space, gathering space, if you will, for weddings that take place at the gazebo. You could have all kinds of, if you wanted to have summer concert series and things like that, you could do that with an evergreen backdrop to the south that provided a little separation from Dorothy Street, but really starts to make it this into a nice little room. Uh, and and really the village green, if you will, uh for the historic village. Um, thirty-four is a proposed parking lot in the future. This was on the previous master plan. We've tweaked it a little bit because because of the existing or the relocated Veterans Memorial. Uh, and then also to accommodate additional pathway systems to connect the the village uh to the uh circulation system along Pontiac Trail. Uh, so there's a little bit of a parking lot that could serve either festivals uh in Memorial, you know, the uh Veterans Memorial or Memorial Day festivities here. But then also to accommodate users on a daily, day-to-day basis of the village as well as, you know, a smaller parking lot uh that that could serve, you know, a wedding or what have you. Certainly, this is not going to accommodate, you know, large gatherings. But you do have parking lots that are, you know, future parking lot here in number four. Uh, number eleven, which is over here, that's your existing parking lot. Uh, and then you also have a smaller paved parking lot in number thirty-eight currently. That used to be a gravel surface off of off of Warren Street. Uh, so that's, let's see, I don't think I have anything else. Did I miss anything, Paul? I think I've hit all the highlights.
No, I I think you think you hit everything.
Okay.
Thanks.
So, thank you. Are there any questions?
Number Kibble, go ahead.
Uh, I have two, actually. The I see that there's a new bridge to be located in there. That's pretty exciting. Yeah.
Here?
Yes. Uh-huh. Now, do you have a sense of what the construction would end up being?
The construction of the material?
Yes.
Oh, there there's a number of different materials. You can do it out of timber, you know, with large span of beams. Well, we've done a park here in Northville that is a twenty-five foot bridge of made of made of wood. You can also make it out of steel, but it would have a wood deck or a composite deck, but a steel structure. And then on either side of your uh of the creek, obviously, you would have uh, you would have the um head walls that the bridge would attach to.
Right, okay. Uh, the other question that I have is, is there a sense of how much time is left on the existing contract for the billboard?
This billboard that's here?
Right.
I don't know. I can't answer that.
Paul, do you have a sense of that?
I don't have the exact timeframe, but I can certainly check this out that.
You would, yeah. I I'm, that'd be pretty important to not have that in the pond.
Yeah, I agree with you. I agree with. Yeah, and the the notion of having a pond here was not only an amenity. Uh, obviously, we have, we have some uh, you know, some legal issues with the with the uh contract for the for the billboard. But we're, it was our hope, too, that we could dig this deep enough and accommodate enough water, maybe even make up well to irrigate the park with it. Or at least a portion of the park.
Oh, so that's not simply storm stormwater?
It would be some of each, but but we would have to dig it deep enough to be able to accommodate. Uh, and and it would have to have the mass, so you could have a cubic foot storage for stormwater as well as as contributing water for irrigation system.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Councilman Dilg?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just a couple of questions really quickly. Um, this, I love this. It made me almost tear up when I looked at it. But it seems more like a vision than a plan. Like, is there, does, is there some time where we put a a schedule to this or timing or money or anything?
Uh, I I can answer that a little bit, and Paul might want to chime in, but typically parks, parks are generated or designed as master plans most often times, particularly larger pieces of the property. And so then what you do is you start to break it down, not unlike what they, what the county or commission has just done with number forty-six in the we-go, we-go swing. You know, hey, we have X amount of money. You know, thank you, thank you for your vote. We have X amount of money to do one thing a year or whatever, whatever it is. There's also the opportunity to seek grants uh for a phase, if you will. I mean, it's a pretty ambitious plan. Uh, but you you do have a lot of good bones already built, and it's just, there's a lot of things that are in here are really just complimenting um some of the things that are already there, but they're also uh falling in line with some of the with the Park and Rec Master Plan and some of the objectives there. Uh, and the Park and Rec Master Plan is up is is up for a renewal. So some of these things that are in this park, uh, well, this will become part of the master plan document, which then allows this the granting uh to be available because it's a part of the master plan. So to answer your question, if I could, you would go into a much more refined set of drawings uh that then you would solicit bids, contract, you know, bids from prospective contractors. And then you would have, that would all fall in line with the with the available budget for that particular phase.
So just current, all I wanted to know is currently, there's no real schedule that says, like, in the next five years, we want to do this part of this, the next ten years, we want to do this, this part of this. That doesn't exist?
It doesn't now. You will see some of that in the revised mass, Parks and Rec Master Plan as an action plan item. But the action plan items for the next five years uh touch all the parks. They don't necessarily focus on one.
Right. Okay, and the last thing I had is just, um, if you could scroll down just a little bit, um. The uh, where that new water tower is, um, there are a lot of residents there concerned about how that looks. And I just wanted to know that are we still planning to build that up, that the shrubbery up tall enough that it's going to give them a little bit better view?
The notion-
That's actually with.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Mark. Go ahead, Mark. I'm sorry.
Oh, fine. Um, these trees right here are evergreen trees, okay? So they would go in at whatever five or probably eight or ten feet tall. Uh, so in in due time, you know, they're they're gonna be tall, but you know, planting, well, even if you're in your backyard and you have an eight-foot tree, you know, right at your property line, that's gonna serve us as at least some deterrent into the view.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great.
Thank you.
Councilmember Walton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um one thing that I'm missing here, maybe I'm not missing it, or maybe it wasn't thought you put in, but. It looks like there's only the existing restrooms for this entire park, I'm looking for another restroom. Um preferably one that is year round.
Well, we don't, I don't think we have one uh currently um in the scheme. Certainly, you could, you could improve this one uh to to serve that need, I would reckon. Um I don't know if there's a public restroom over here, I don't believe there is, uh or even in this location. Um for for all the park users per se, you do have the ability, this is a pavilion. Okay, it it could be part covered uh or a covered picnic area and part restrooms. You know, in this location, but you know, the part, the issue that you have is now you have, you know, potentially two restaurants that are right next to each other. You know, you do have the ability for number thirteen, we talked a little bit about this. This is another location where we may have a vending machine. But oftentimes, and you you, I'm sure you guys have seen these in parks where you have. Covered pavilions that have restrooms accommodated within the the roof structure. So in due time that maybe this this does warrant a a location for a restroom in the future. This next to the sledding hill. Whatever, but baseball fields.
Thank you, and and as along with the tree line that is going along the water tower. What are we doing along the creek side where the residents are there, because it looks like we might, I think there's a email that went out. They wanna make sure that you guys are aware that their property goes over the creek, so we wanna make sure that we aren't um going on to their property.
Yeah, well, what we'll do, um and I looked before the meeting, I looked at a pre, at a survey that we received from your city engineer. But any work that's gonna be done in this area, we're we're going to need a survey. Um and we'll get a survey with with the title work completed. So we'll be able to know exactly where those property lines are and we won't encroach into anybody's property.
Perfect, thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Walton, Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um first of all, uh Mark, thank you for just a brilliant, brilliant layout, I I. Didn't know how you were gonna solve the problem and uh this is just a fantastic arc. Um it it just brings a lot of excitement, I started off on Parks and Recs. So this this takes me home, I I worked with the um Erica Wilson, who just mentored me through a lot of stuff. Um and I respect her judgment and her leadership just phenomenally. Uh this is a phenomenal, phenomenal um plan. Uh just a couple of real quick issues um on the pond up front. Is it possible that maybe to add to the aesthetics, we have a a little aerator fountain that is in there moving that water in that pond?
That's what these, that's that's what these are right here.
Oh, okay, all right, already done, and um I was very, very pleased um to see the location for the barn. Um actually being plotted in there, uh number forty-four, yes, so I'm glad to see that, uh so thank you for for that. And I am, um I I have a number in my head, but I. I I wish that the city of South Lyon had a La Fontaine, and I think you know what I'm talking about in terms of what they've been able to do for Milford. Uh I am meeting with somebody this week, uh and um I'm gonna be very blunt and I'm gonna ask him for some money. Uh whether or not we get it, I don't know, but you know, you you'll never know unless you ask. But um I'm curious, what is the total price tag on this?
We have not done an estimate, I honestly can say.
Fifteen million, twenty million?
Oh, I, oh no, I I don't think it's, I don't think it's that much.
Ten million?
I don't know, I hate doing this.
I I I mean, are we talking over ten million or under, I mean, what realistically, kind of, an estimate?
I think we're, I think we're, I think we're under ten million, I think we're in the neighborhood of five to ten million dollars, what do you think, Paul?
I I think that, I think that's correct, and I I think that's something that when we start to look at these things for the. Parks and Rec Master Plan, updating that, we start to put price tags on items. And we look at, you know, what the timeframe is for doing something like this as well for the next five years, and we start to. You know, put those numbers on there so people can actually see, because it is, it is really conceptual. But it's anytime we start to look at anything and we start to plan, we start to, we wanna apply for a grant, so let's say. We're trying to make an improvement for one section of this, or we wanna do something for a bike station. Or for the park parking lot or something like that, we have this, we'll have the updated plan, because everybody wants to see what your plan gonna look like in the future. What's your, you know, estimate, like you're saying, for the total park, and that's how you get those donations, so I think this is, this is really step one. Parks and Rec Master Plan, step two, step three is, let's go, let's go for it and start assigning dollars and start making some of this happen.
Yeah, I can, I can tell you that, you know, you have those two residences currently on site that you're leasing, well, you leased the the one remaining. Um and you know, I don't know if that building sta- stands, you know, through, you know, the entirety of this park, it becomes a different use. Don't really know, maybe that's another restroom use that we were speaking of earlier. You know, we we did close Washington Street, you know, adjusted pedestrian traffic. And that was really resulting from uh this uh this house going away. We do have a current entrance up here off of Pontiac Trail, that's that basically ties in with this uh service area right here, and there's a house in this location. But the plan doesn't reflect that, the plan reflects that eventually they will go away.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead, you have not spoken yet.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so uh. Mark, you talked about the potential for additional parking on the south side of Dorothy Street. I can't read the number on the yellow dot there, whatever that is there.
Forty-five.
Okay, uh any discussion about a pavilion in that area as well? That's been brought up in the uh the past uh to use in conjunction with that uh parking lot.
Yeah, we we kinda kicked that around a little bit in the commission, honestly, um you know, we would just need to get our hands on a a little bit of more of a programming component. But you know, and maybe the master plan and that whole effort with the public engagement process and some of the focus groups. Uh that would probably lead us a a little closer to a decision of what forty-five may become.
Okay, one of the, one of the concerns that I do have is that uh it appears the uh the plan was developed. Uh without any input from the Historical Society. Uh their their plans and their vision really wasn't discussed. Uh I know that we have provisions for a barn, I know that they're also looking to uh potentially put a house in there. Uh nobody talked to them about this at all, I'm just curious why they weren't involved in the discussions.
I I did in fact talk with some members of the of the Historical Society, that's how we, that's how we came up with the barn. We talked about where potentially something like that might be located, I talked with that.
I understand that part, Paul, about the barn, but I had phone calls tonight from members of the Historical Society. That said, they did not have input to this. And so obviously, somebody doesn't think that they they were pro- participants in this. I guess I'd look to have the Parks and Rec Commission, you uh reach out to them and have a uh a sit down and. And make sure that we're all on the same page, is all I'm looking for in it. Their biggest concern was the amount of uh real estate being taken up by that parking lot, that's up by the uh the veterans lot. That may be nothing more than an annex parking lot for the witch's hat, which has had brewing company. So that's part of the concern, and also what the, what that looks like from Pontiac Trail, when you're driving down, all you see is a parking lot there. Now, you could, you could potentially shield it with some plantings or whatever, but I don't know, it looks like there's maybe thirty parking spots in there. I don't know if you need something that large, or maybe they're just uh their spots for uh their handicap spots and a larger parking lot. Takes place on the south side of Dorothy has has been discussed, and people can walk the sidewalk to the Veterans Memorial. Uh again, they're just looking to be involved in the discussion, at this point, they're saying they have not. So one way or another, I just ask you to reach out to them to kinda address that concern.
And and we will do that, and part of this was presenting this plan, part of it was still incorporating the same plan originally for the park, where there was some. Uh thought process about putting, you know, a parking lot in that location. I did speak to some of the members of the Historical Society last week prior to this. And told them that this was a conceptual plan, and that I would be talking with them again and presenting this to them. So they can see and then they can provide input before we start doing this, because what I want everybody to understand. This is not part of this year's budget that we're putting in that parking lot, we're putting in, cutting off where that driveway is or anything like that. All those things will still need to be discussed with all the players in this as well, so that that is. And I did, I did speak with a member of the Historical Society last week and said I was committing it, committed to do that. They had a meeting last week and I believe they did in fact bring that up, that I would be talking with them about it, so I'm not sure the other members that you had talked to, so.
Well, and and again, uh I will just, you know, and again, obviously, something got lost in translation because. I did have a phone call from one member tonight, and that is exactly why Larry Ledbetter was trying to get on public comment tonight. So there's two members that obviously don't think that they've had their their input heard. All I'm looking for is just to make sure that everybody gets on on board.
Yes, and that's why I said I would make the presentation to them to talk about this, and I did mention that. So I will in fact follow up with that, because like I said, this is really conceptual on those particular things. Where you see those lines are not definitely where the exact location where that parking lot's going.
And Paul, I understand that, and that is exactly what I told them, I said, we're not starting work next week with this plan, so.
That'll be, that's enough, talking over each other tonight. We've been here a long time. You made your point.
I'd like to say something.
Councilmember Richards, you will wait until I'm done. City manager Zellneck has made it clear that he's gonna talk to the Historical Society, and they can hash this out. Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Well, okay, I'll try to keep it short.
I would encourage that you do.
Okay. Uh knowing that I would not be present to see your presentation. Uh Mark Russell, Mr. Russell, I appreciate your work very much, and I I'm very impressed with all the things you've done. But uh I feel ambivalent about this, there's uh everything Mr. Kennedy said. And uh what Mr. Ledbetter would have said. Uh I mean, I I went over this whole thing, since I can't see it in your presentation, I went over this with a. With the strongest magnifying glass I've got, and uh. Uh I filled the whole page with things that I disagreed with, but some I agreed with, okay? And then I quit, now I don't wanna go through it. But uh I'd like to point out a few things uh of importance that should be looked at. Uh extensively in the future. With your permission, Mr. Mayor, can I go through four of them, there's nine, just four.
Certainly, Councilmember Richards.
Okay, my number one item, Article thirty-nine, the the parking lot by the. Five oh one property, to be gravel, okay? A third of what you've got there is on the Dana Johnson property, okay, and I've alerted her to that. Uh uh it's just an error and and uh you will correct it with the survey, I'm sure, but. There's a good third of that whole thing on thirty-nine, that's that's over on their property. Okay, jumping down to number seven, okay? The new bridge, which is Article thirty-five, I'm very much in favor of that. And I was on the original Park and Rec Commission in the nineteen seventies. And we wanted a bridge there, okay, but the our plan at that time was a steel structured bridge. That you could drive a car or a small truck over, maybe not a one ton, I don't know, but it was drivable to go over from one side to the other. Back then, they had another water uh well to be put in there, but. It was Lyndon Beebe's concept at the time that the whole park exists for the benefit of the of the water department. And the fact that there's a a historical uh village on it is incidental, okay? Next item, number eight on my sheet, number forty-four on yours, the barn. Uh we haven't decided that at all, okay, it uh. I'm a member of the society and a uh and a participant with the commission, I can't be on a commission. But it's 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 unknown at present, we have decided where we want the thing even, okay? And we're still negotiating, okay, and the last one, number nine. Uh. Oh, the dri- the 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 driveway, okay? Well, we're losing the driveway, I'm gonna say something, but what about our big tree that we have there with our sign in the middle? That uh it's it's that, that's completely wiped out, we're gonna cut, waste a good tree like that? And uh. Yeah, we wanted, we wanted other things. And I don't know, as far as the pavilion goes on number twenty-one, is there a demand for it, it'd be nice to have it. But how much demand and interest is there for that item? I don't think we've ever taken a survey, anyway, that's that's all I'm gonna mention, I'm uh. Uh I love your work, Mr. Russell, but uh I wasn't able to participate with you in the first part of the year here because of my medical. Uh limitations and uh I remember from last year, we talked, and you certainly know who I am. Uh so I'm a serious uh person of interest uh to discuss this, and I hope we can work on something in the future, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Uh Councilmember Dill, and then I've got Councilmember Walton.
Oh, I'm sorry, I just didn't take down my hand.
Okay.
I have.
Councilmember Walton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um I'm gonna just make a quick comment here on the parking lot at thirty-four. I think it's great, I think it's great that we're getting a parking lot closer to our Veterans Memorial, because a lot of those need. Those veterans need to be able to get to that memorial, and the parking is not accessible now, so that's what I would like to say about that. Um but I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion to approve the master plan for McCaddy Park and adjoining areas.
Okay.
I'm sorry, did I get it, was there a second after that?
Yes, Kurtzwell, second.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Kurtzwell. All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Walton, seconded by Councilmember Kurtzwell, do we have any further discussion on? The McCaddy Park Master Plan update this evening? City Clerk Deaton, could you lead us in a roll call, Bill?
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Richards?
No.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Keville?
Yes.
Paul Chat?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, motion passes. Move on to new business number three this evening, MERS Retiree Health Funding Vehicle, R H S V Investment Update. Patricia?
You're still awake.
I'm still here.
Thank you for being here.
Well, I'll try not to bore everyone, um just as a reminder, uh MERS is the custodian and fiduciary of the city's OPEB trust. That we established last summer um as for our retirement uh health funding vehicle. Currently, we have holdings of one hundred forty-four thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars. In um this trust. MERS as an organization has decided to update their program. Um and this is in order to remain compliant with the Persia Act, which is the Public Employee Retirement Systems Investment Act. As well as state and federal accounting best practices. So MERS now will be offering uh two options for all municipalities that participate. One is to continue to retain MERS as our sole fiduciary of the city's assets. Um the other would be for the city to take over the fiduciary responsibilities, which in a sense means we would have. Total responsibility of the day-to-day investments in that fund. If we decide um as a city to continue to have MERS remain as our fiduciary. Then we will also need to move our investments in a hundred percent to the total market fund. If everyone remembers in the uh, believe it was in June, when we first established the OPEB trust. Council decided that we would put ten percent of the city's investments into total market and ninety percent into short-term income. Well, with these changes, MERS is actually eliminating the short-term income fund altogether. And is also stating that for them to maintain the fiduciary control. They will put um everything, all your funds will have to go into the total mar- market account. So in order to do that, um. So in order to do that, um, we actually don't have to make any action tonight formally with MERS. It would just be an internal action amongst council. It would be to, um. Assert that we want to retain MERS as our fiduciary and custodian of our OPEB trust. Through their retirement health funding vehicle. And that we would move a hundred percent of our current investments to the total market fund. Does anyone have any questions for me regarding this?
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
It's not a question, but it seems as though they're much better equipped to be able to manage our funding. You guys have an awful lot on your plate already without having to, to address. Where everything is going. So I, I think this makes perfect sense. As a fiduciary, they, I mean, my understanding is their responsibility is to make sure that we're. In the best position that we can be from what they're, they're going to do for us, so. I hope we have some recourse in the event that proves not to be the case, but I don't, they have an awful long track record, so. Thank you. I'll make that motion actually. I mean, let's just get this thing going. To approve the maintaining, maintaining MERS as a sole fiduciary responsible for. Investment of the city's retiree health funding vehicle. Assets and relocation of a hundred percent of the city's current investment assets. Into the MERS retirement health funding vehicle tool market. A second, total market fund, excuse me. I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Kibble, supported by Councilmember Kennedy. Did we have any further questions for Patricia this evening on this? Before we do a roll call vote?
I do.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Uh, Patricia, um. I'm in favor of murders, uh. But if we're, if we're relinquishing control of our funds. Who, would they approach us about what they want to do with certain funds or how they feel we should allocate? I'm not unfamiliar with investing. If, if we abdicate total control of, of what we choose to invest in. Then we've got a case, it appears to me, of the tail wagging the dog. And I'd just like to know what you think and what you know, uh, regarding, uh. Where we go from here, okay? If we, do we have any control at all? Over our money if we let MERS handle, uh, the funds?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Richards. Well, essentially, MERS will retain. The responsibility that council gave them this past summer. Um, as the fiduciary, they have investment advisors. These are trained individuals that are licensed and trained in areas I am not. To be able to invest our funds, watch them daily to make sure that. Um, all of the funds, because this is a pooled program, so these are mutual funds essentially that we're participating in are, um, performing. Um, meeting not only what they would consider good standards for the municipality so that we're not losing money. But also they have to meet all of the guidelines set forth by the Persia Act, state guidelines. Um, the accounting standards boards. So these individuals, um, you know, are very reputable. And, um, they, they are held to very high standards. They are audited, similar to the way we're audited. As a matter of fact, Plant Moran is also MERS's auditor as well. Um, and so they, they of course have to meet rigorous standards and so. I personally feel much more comfortable having a group such as MERS. Handling the fiduciary responsibilities and, and watching our investments on a day-to-day basis. Than us trying to maintain control internally. And either hire a consultant to assist the city. Or to, you know, have the individuals that are already work for the city trying to manage that.
Well, okay, uh. What, does this increase the cost of our contract with, with the MERS organization at all to? Uh, go this route?
No, in a sense, this doesn't change anything that we are currently doing with MERS or any additional fees. The only thing that changes is that we no longer have access to that short-term investment. Fund that has been eliminated. So we, and we also are losing, there was, um, ten. Total funds initially that we were able to choose to, to put our money into. Now they're saying everything has to go into this total market fund.
Okay, you got me. I don't know. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kibble, seconded by Councilmember Kennedy. City Clerk Deaton, go ahead, Councilmember Kibble.
Sorry, I, I just have to ask one question. How much money are we talking about being in these funds?
Right now we have a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars.
All right, that's what you had said in the beginning. All right. I, I thought that might have been the ten percent and I thought, well, we're banking an awful lot more money than I thought.
No, that's, that is our, our total amount.
Thank you.
City Clerk Deaton, could you lead us in a roll call vote, please?
Kennedy?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Kurtswell?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
Paul Chat?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes. Move on to the budget this evening. Anyone got anything on the budget? Go ahead, Paul.
The budget tonight, I was just gonna say, we can, you know, answer any questions you have regarding the current budget or the proposed budget. Uh, that's coming up for adoption at our next meeting. One of the items we did talk about, um, at one of the budget meetings, someone had brought up regarding. The additional millage that we potentially could levy. We did include that with your last packet for, for information on the budget that we provided. That that was being used for a, uh, potential additional capital improvement fund for the budget. If anybody has any questions on that or if they're making any recommendations or changes of anything, uh, please let us know. Um, we can discuss that right now, or if you have anything else you want to bring up or email us on, we can do it then as well.
All right, great. We're gonna move on from the budget. We'll open the floor for public comment. Please remember to state your name and address and the.
Uh, Ryan Lair has his hand raised.
All right, the floor is Mr. Lair's.
Uh, good evening, council. Uh. Due to the rain, several residents approached me and asked if there was a way we could have a second garage sale. While I was, uh, out, I stopped over at Glenn's while he was having his garage sale and Cindy, uh, his wife. Mentioned September was, uh, was, would a day or a month? Middle of September, she, she would like to have one. I told her I would mention it to council. And several other residents mentioned, um. Mid-August, so parents could get back, back to school clothes for children because of the rain that we encountered. I think it's great for the city. Um, I think it's a huge benefit for the city and the residents. And, uh, I would like to ask all of council to entertain. Uh, a discussion or, uh, amongst themselves privately or whatever, if they would be interested in, in having a second garage sale, I think it would be great. Um, second of all, I would like to thank, uh, Maggie and Rose and Lisa Dill for. Their, uh, willingness to help with the, uh, parking for the ladies night and I will be in contact with Bonnie tomorrow. And, uh, help her with those forms from the fire department, uh, on the advice of Chief Vogel. And, uh, we will get this all going for the ladies for next year. Um, third and much least, uh, Steve, uh, Kennedy. I did not appreciate how you treated Mr. Zelnick tonight. I, I think it's really important that you apologize in private because it's been a long night. Uh, but he did say that he spoke to some members of the commission. He didn't say all. And, um, while there was a discussion and Mr. Richards was present at the meeting, I know it was discussed. We need to, we need to respect our city manager and when he says he's spoken to somebody, we need to give him the benefit of the doubt. And, um, for that, um, that kind of behavior is unexcusable. And just remember, I'm your boss because I'm the one that voted you into office and I'm telling you it wasn't pleased tonight. And I don't think it's funny that you're laughing. That's all I have tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Um, City Clerk Deaton, do we have anyone else, um, ready for public comment this evening?
No, we didn't.
With that, we'll close the public comment and move on to the manager's report.
A few items. One, uh, again, a reminder, next meeting, we're gonna do the adoption of the twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two budget. Please contact me if you have any questions on that. Uh, the cemetery and volunteer park grading. We are out for bid for that to redo the grading of section, or for section eleven, so we can start to improve that particular site at the cemetery. As well as the grading for potential new practice fields and parking area. Um, at Volunteer Park, that was in this year's budget as well as some for next year's budget as well. The road improvement plan, plan, excuse me, and our city council meeting on May twenty-fourth, we're gonna have another discussion and presentation on our road improvement plan. This will include discussion on funding and overall plan and how we will go about repairing. Reconstructing and maintaining our roads in the future. Our engineers from HRC will be in attendance assisting with this discussion. And alternatives for funding road improvements are gonna be discussed at that meeting as well. And last regarding the parks and rec, I just want to let everybody know, make sure everybody realizes that, yes, I will be discussing. And bringing this before the Historical Society as well as talking it over. With the veterans group, so everybody can have the input on how this future plan is gonna be for McCady Park and adjoining area. We did the survey, uh, last year also for, um, McCady Park and adjoining area and we wanted to make sure we started to draw this up. For the parks and rec, even though this is the historical village and the veterans area, we wanted to include that also, so people could see. Conceptually what we're looking at going forward. And all those final details, like I said, when I presented with those particular, uh, other entities, uh, they can work out all those details. So when it does come time. That we make those improvements, those are definitely the wishes of all the groups. And that's all I have for tonight and we have it to answer any questions that anybody may have.
Councilmember Dill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Really quickly, um. Uh, on the trail where that, um, wall is, it looks like it's falling apart. Um, I don't know who to tell this to, but, um, there is, uh, racial and vulgar language, uh. Painted on there and I know it's not our property, so I just want to make sure somebody hears that and maybe does something about it because it's, it's been there for a week. Thank you.
We will take care of that.
Councilmember Kurtswell?
You, Mr. Mayor. Um, Paul, uh, I just wanted to know if it would be possible if you could, uh, maybe speak with DPW. Uh, around Reynolds Sweet Parkway, there is a ton of garbage that's, um, up against that. Fence that's on the city side and, you know. If, if I have time this week, maybe I can get over there and, and do it myself, but. Uh, it's been there for a while. It's very noticeable and we're getting ready for our memorial weekend. Uh, with, with a parade and it would be nice if that stretch in there could just be, uh, cleaned up and then maybe. The enforcement officer could contact Southline Woods and have them go along the fence on their side. And clean up their property too. Um, uh, so that would be great, unless we've got a volunteer that wants to do it and become the hero. Um, but that's just a little project, it, by memorial weekend, you know, it's not anything that has to be done tomorrow. But, um, it's just sort of on a wish list. Uh, next, when I was out garage sale shopping, um, one of the questions that people asked me is when is City Hall going to open? I think you have people that, um, enjoy our city employees and enjoy. Coming in and paying a bill and chatting and so I just wanted to know if you had any timetable on that.
I, I don't have the exact timetable, but within our office, we are having discussions about how we go about and when we do in fact open, what are the additional protocols that we're gonna be putting in place? I know people like coming in and talking to us and because of COVID, that's one of those things that always isn't necessarily. Um, one of the things that you want to have with people that just want to stop in and talk and. Um, I think you understand what I'm talking about, but yeah, so we are talking about that and trying to figure what that timeframe is actually gonna be. So we have met as a staff and we're, we're going over all those items now.
Well, you, you know what, Paul? I'm talking to people at the farmer's market. I'm talking to people and I'm out in the grocery store, so. I mean, we are out engaging. I mean, I just wanted to let you know.
Yeah, and, and that's true and some of those things are outside our bigger movement and we're, we're gonna buy, you know, some additional equipment for air movement and circulation within the building. Because we do want to make sure it's safe, not only for the employees, but also for the customers and people that are coming in. And we do realize that more and more people are getting vaccinated, so that, that's making everything just better every single day.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Walton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just real quick, if, when you're talking to the DPW, if you could ask them a long ten mile, uh, outside of Cawkin Street, there's a. Speed limit sign or maybe it's a do not pass sign, but it's being blocked by the trees. You don't see it until you're right up on it. Um, so maybe if you could kind of be cognizant of the signs and speed limit signs and things in our city that we can clear those up. Thank you.
Anyone else got anything for Paul this evening? Okay, great. Thank you. Move on to council comments. Councilmember Richards, why don't you start us off tonight?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. As we've gone a long time. Uh, Mr. Mr. Lair already addressed the issue of garage sales and I'm in favor of possibly having another one because. Although a lot of people had fun doing it at least one day because we had one good day out of it. I think, uh, overall, we could use another garage sale, uh, session, uh, down the road somewhere. Uh, I'll just, because of my medical conditions, uh. Over the last three months, I haven't been able to make a lot of meetings. And, uh, I'm sorry about that, but, uh, I've done the best I can. And, uh, I'm, uh, getting stronger. At this time and I got my second COVID vaccination. I'm probably one of the last ones to get it. Last Friday in Holton, Michigan, uh, outside of Lansing. And I owe the transportation and the favor of arranging it to Mr. Ryan Lair again. Also, he helped me get my new driver's license, which I haven't had one for a long time. Uh, month, last month, uh. These are the things I could not have done on my own. Anyway, uh, I hope we can snap out of this weather and, uh. I'm glad they had a good, uh, turnout for, on a cold night for the ladies. And, uh, I think we're moving forward and I think we've got a positive attitude going on in all our community. And, uh, I, I do other things behind the scenes that I don't bring to council. Uh, so I hope I'm able to have, maintain my strength. And, uh, continue on with my work. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards. Walton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just have one quick thing tonight. I wanted to highlight, um. Oh, goodness, I think I just lost it. It was. The First United Methodist Church of South Lion, they're running a. Uh, program, the church has left the building and they're doing hands-on community service all around South Lion. And I know they did some work for Active Faith. They also did some work for, I believe, the Historical Society. So I just want to thank them for getting out there and helping out. We do appreciate everybody that works in our city. Um, so with that, I'm gonna wish everyone have a good night. Thank you.
Did you say Councilmember Dill?
Yes.
I didn't hear you. Okay.
Sorry, I know I'm leaning over.
Um, I had a lot of stuff. I got, I crossed it all out. I just wanted most, uh, one thing is the, um. Presbyterian Church in town is having a blood drive tomorrow and I know that they, um, are in great need of blood. So please consider that and I just wanted to say, um. That I didn't get a chance to say it last meeting, but I'm really happy that, uh, the mayor has decided to run again. I'm, I'm happy and I think we all saw today how well he has, uh, corralled this group. So thank you so much. That's all I have. Good night.
Thank you, Councilmember Dill. Uh, Councilmember Kurtswell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first of all, I would like to thank our very own arts, uh, cultural arts commissioner, Patty Dumbekky. Uh, she has a gallery show over at the Wooden Spoon on Grand River in Brighton. I was there this weekend and, uh, what, uh. Uh, what a talented individual she is and how lucky we are to have. she is and how lucky we are to have her on our Culture Arts Commission. Her artwork was being very well received, and it was just, it was amazing to sit in the restaurant and listen to people comment, and knowing that that person sits on our Culture Arts Commission in South Lyon. So thank you, Patty. Just great, great accolades going to you. Next, to pay tribute to the law enforcement officers who have made the ultimate sacrifice for our country, and to voice our appreciation for all those who currently serve on the front lines of the battle against crime, the Congress, by joint resolution, approved October 1st, 1962, authorized and requested the president to designate May 15th of each year as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which it falls as National Police Week. And the president at that time was John F. Kennedy, and he happens to be on my back wall here with Sophie Williams on the McEnroe Bridge. And he really was a handsome man. I mean, I probably should have made that kind of comment, but he, he was a good president. And so, and it came into law. So on May 15th of this week, please, let's remember our police officers, do something nice for them, make a nice comment to them, have a Zoom meeting with them. If you're a teacher and invite a police officer to the classroom, invite a police, a law enforcement officer to a social event. Tell an officer just that, that you appreciate what they're doing, because that can go a very, very, very long way. And what I do is, if I hear somebody slamming a police officer in public and making comments, I fight back and I, I stand up. So that's what I do. So I just want to say to Chief Sobick and all the officers, I hope you have a very good week, Police Officer Week. Enjoy May 15th. It's in your honor. And last, I want to send a sincere congratulations to Chief Craig in the city of Detroit, who announced that he is retiring. I put in my retirement card to him on Friday, and we are all losing an incredible committed individual. And talk about a police officer that is not only a role model for all police, but he is a role model with integrity for all elected officials. So Chief Craig, good luck on your endeavors as you move forward. And I don't know, I think if you ran for public office, you'd probably win. So he's a good man, well-respected throughout the country. So good night. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtzwell. Councilmember Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, I want to recognize and congratulate Carrie Kavanaugh, the interim director for the South Lyon Center for Active Adults, for her efforts at organizing and conducting a COVID vaccination event at the center on May 3rd at the South Lyon High School. The effort all began when Carrie contacted Reddy Nursing Solutions to provide the vaccinations using the Moderna vaccine. She then worked with the South Lyon Community School Administration to obtain the needed, the required approvals from South Lyon Community School Superintendent Steve Archibald, Facilities and Grounds Manager Chris Ballinger, and South Lyon High School Principal Jim Brennan. Next, Carrie obtained the required approvals for the center's municipality board, including Green Oak Township Supervisor Mark St. Charles, Lyon Township Supervisor John Dolan, and South Lyon City Manager Paul Zellner. Like the vaccination event at Colonial Acres, this event required a number of volunteers to make it a reality. And so I'd like to recognize those volunteers that worked the Paul Center and contacted 545 individuals from our community in an effort to register them. This group included Sharon Loftus, Sally Kinney, Randy Hardy, Ellen Fitzpatrick, Winn Hawes, Nancy Whip, Joan Schiford, Sue Tolan, and Rita Allen. I'd also like to recognize a group of volunteers who reached out to members of their neighborhood and places of employment in an effort to sign up additional individuals. This group included Councilmember Glenn Kibble, Councilmember Lisa Dill, and Mayor Dan Pelchat, along with myself. Further, I'd like to recognize the volunteers to work the event. This group included Denise Simeon, Carrie Masson, Jackie Betteke, Mike Flores, Katie Fitzpatrick, Joan Schiford, Sue Tolan, and Rita Allen. I also want to recognize and thank Sue Barak for her efforts and expertise in working with Carrie to help organize and plan the event. And finally, I want to recognize and thank Cory Bowles and the South Lyon Hotel for generously donating lunch to the nurses and volunteers on the day of the event. In the end, over 575 individuals from our community were contacted. 55% responded that they were already vaccinated, and another 50 individuals were signed up and received their vaccinations during that event. So thank you to all of those involved for your time, effort, and involvement in making this community event a success. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Kibble?
My wife and I had gone down for ladies' night, and it looked as though gals were having a nice time. They were lined up at the stores and convincing as people were, I mean, there were such lines that they had to stand in line on the sidewalk as people would conduct their, their shopping. So I thought that was a good sign. The farmer's market last weekend was just delightful. There was plenty of people. Everybody was really, had a very upbeat feeling about what was going on down there. And that, that was an awful lot of fun, too. We had our grandson with us, too, so that was an extra joy. So, and I wanted to thank Lisa Dill for pointing out the fact that we didn't ask for donations for the playground equipment in the park, and I think that that's a perfectly appropriate metric to use in, in assessing that swing. So thank you for that. I appreciate it. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Kibble. It's been a long night. I don't have much. I'm looking forward to meeting with some of our students tomorrow to do mock interviews for the reading and writing for the College Bound. I'm sure they'll be very well prepared and ready to go at 7:15 in the morning. So with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Move to adjourn.
Have a great night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.